Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor waterfront lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1 Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Okay, welcome. Good evening. This is the November 9, 2020 Falmouth Select Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to start by going through and just doing a roll call. When I say your name, if you'll just note your presence, and then I'll just go over a few of the rules for the virtual meetings. So I'll just start with myself, English Braga, present, Jones.
Present, Jones.
Brown.
Brown, present.
Patterson.
Patterson, present.
Taylor.
Taylor, present.
And we also have Town Manager Julian Susso. We also have Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub, and we have folks from IT as usual assisting us. So, welcome to everyone. Just, I know we've been doing this for many months now, so I'll just briefly remind folks that this meeting is being held virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have special orders from the governor that allows us to meet in this manner. Individuals can participate by going to the selectmen's website, the select board's website, for the Town of Falmouth website, and you'll see all of the instructions for how to join the Zoom meeting and to use the chat feature to make any comments during the meeting that you would like to. For folks that aren't comfortable with that, you can do what many people have been doing for the last six or more months, which is really sending us some emails in advance and asking us to read that into the public record during either public comment, if that's appropriate, or when we get to the subject matter on the agenda that you'd like us to read your comment about. And just a reminder, we receive many, many emails. Sometimes we receive, you know, many in one day. If there's a particular item on the agenda that's of interest, we read all of them. We try to at least respond, if possible, to let you know that we've received it. You'll only receive really one response generally, either from the chair or vice chair, just to let you know we've received it. It would be an open meeting violation if all of us responded to you and had a conversation about that subject matter. So, we have received many emails today. I know Doug has responded to a number of them. I have tried as well, but there were a lot that came in right before this meeting, but I can assure you that this board really does read everything that is sent to us, even if you don't get a response from everyone. We've all put our eyes on it, and it's in our back of our mind to utilize when that subject matter comes up. What I'll do is, you know, just if people are slow in logging or getting to the chat feature, I'll try to stay on top of it. So if you miss somewhere where you were trying to make a comment, don't not make a comment, just type it in the chat feature, and I'll try to return to it. I know it's a little bit of a new world, and people have different levels of comfort using this Zoom platform. Okay, so with that, I would ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God.
Invisible.
Liberty, justice.
For all.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Okay, starting with recognition. Does anyone have anything in particular that they wanted to comment on this week? Doug?
Well, I think it's only right that we thank and appreciate our veterans this week. It's Veterans Day coming up, and I'd like to specifically thank all the members of our local Falmouth Veterans Group. We have the VFW, the Joe Q Coffee Break, which is an agglomeration of other groups, including the Disabled American Veterans and Falmouth Military Support Group. And although we have not yet been able to get a lease worked out for the Veterans Center over at Dillingham Ave, they have worked hard, and we're looking forward to see what comes out of that. But regardless of what that might be, we want to thank them all for their efforts, and we've got a great bunch of people here in Falmouth that support our veterans, and I really appreciate it.
Indeed.
Including our Veterans Agent, who does a lot of good work.
Yes, and hopefully sometime soon we'll be able to do some of these celebrations and recognitions of our veterans in person. This is, you know, really the second one this year that we've had to, you know, put off our public, you know, ceremonies for. So hopefully when the next rolls around, we'll be in person. Sam?
I think, I want to give a special thanks to all those people that worked the polls so that all of us got a chance to vote. We had, I guess, from all the numbers I've heard, we had a record turnout of voters across the country, and everything appears to have gone smoothly. And I want to say thank you to everybody that voted, but everybody that allowed us to vote and register our choices.
Great, thank you. And we know that it goes, all the work goes on after Election Day for the Clerk's Office as well. So huge thanks to all of that town staff for, you know, really making it look pretty seamless. Really long lines, and when I went to vote, a gentleman said he was there for the fifth time that day. He'd come five times during his workday to try and vote, but the lines had been so long. And so, you know, really kudos to the folks that did stand in line for a long time, and, you know, really did that civic duty, and a huge thanks to our staff. And as you said, Sam, all those folks who worked the polls pretty late at night. So, really impressive. Anything else? How about any announcements from the board? Sam?
I do have a reminder. I think all of you have received an email, but the Cape Cod Selectmen and Islands Counselors Association meeting is this Friday morning at 7:30. Topics will be a fiscal update from John Robertson, who's our MMA representative to the legislation in Boston. It should be an interesting meeting to kind of get caught up, especially on the back end of the election, to see if anything is developing in the legislature at the time. And of course, they're going to be talking about the financing issues that they're struggling with and working on. So I would encourage you to come. Oh, there's one other subject that they're posting is what really happened in 2020, and I guess they're looking for comments from each of the town delegations to just point out the significant things that happened in Falmouth and every other municipality on the Cape, a sort of a retrospective looking back.
Okay, and is there, what's the timing for that?
It's at 7:30 a.m. on Friday morning, and you should have actually received an invitation from Ed McManus.
I'm sure I did.
Giving you the link, the Zoom link.
Great. Thank you.
You know, I see, I see in the comments that a person is asking why there's not some information about the Mayflower Wind, which is coming up, so it's not appropriate to make the comments, but under announcements, I'd like to announce that the information is in the select board packet. So if people want to go and see what we're discussing, you can always go onto our town website and go onto the selectman department and look up selectmen packet. What's the actual thing to look up, Mr. Susso?
Should be the board packet for the particular meeting date in question. In this case, of course, November 9.
Right.
Be able to download that and take a look at it.
And then, once we've completed this meeting, we'll post this whole packet onto the town's website. Is that correct?
Yes, all of the attachments we would be posting as well.
Right, it's very informative, and I found it very, very well addressed many of the questions that we had, not all, but most. So we can ask the last couple tonight when we get to it. So I don't want to go too far with that, but I just wanted to make that announcement. So.
Yeah, just, it's a good general reminder that folks can take a look at, you know, look at all of that information and see exactly what is before the select, everything that's before us and that we are looking at for information, they can see as well.
And thanks to our old friend Mark.
But we can address, I see comments.
That was a good idea.
It was. And then there's some other comments, and I'll bring those up when we get to the subject matter. I see some other specific comments, so they're not public comment material. So, okay, under public comment, this is an opportunity for individuals to speak for up to two minutes on an issue that is not on our agenda. So something that is not before us this evening, and it is a time when we are unable to make comment on it because it isn't on our agenda, but we can listen to your thoughts, your concerns, suggestions for something that we need to look at or talk about in the future. So I'm just going to give it one moment to see if anyone has any public comment. And I don't see anything right now, but as I noted, I'll try to just keep my eye on that. If somebody else sees it, point it out to me, please. Okay, next, we are moving on to vote to affirm appointment of Facilities Maintenance Manager. Mr. Susso.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure as Town Manager to recommend that you affirm my appointment of Mr. Greg Endicott as the town's Facilities Maintenance Manager, exceeding retiring Chardell Newton. Greg is here with us this evening virtually as well. I can affirm that we did receive a very large number, very gratifying number of well-qualified candidates, and Greg was the best qualified candidate of that group. And he comes to us most recently from the Steamship Authority, where he has worked for the past, since 2015, as Facilities Manager as well. And I would welcome Greg making any additional comments he would care to, and welcome the board's support. And I also need to note that Greg is a resident of the Town of Plymouth nearby, and I would ask for the board's consideration of a waiver of residency as a result of that. So without further ado, we're happy to have Greg with us, Madam Chair, if that's in order for him to make a few comments.
Sure, welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
I'd just like to thank you for the chance to join you tonight and introduce myself. I'm very excited for the opportunity. I have worked with multiple town departments and committees over the past five years in my role at the Steamship Authority, and I'm very excited to be joining the town and anxious to get started.
Great. Anyone have any questions for Greg? Doug Brown?
Same question I always ask, but this time I've got another angle on it. Do you think that if this job works out, you'll eventually become a Falmouth resident?
Um, I've considered the possibility. I'm not sure at the moment, but yeah, it definitely could be a possibility.
I gotta tell you, we've been waiving that residency restriction on a lot of these jobs, and sometimes it makes sense, you know, with like particular, certain positions that it's really hard to find people. I'm not saying it's not hard to find a maintenance supervisor either, but I just don't want to keep doing that forever. And so I'm going to ask the board to consider maybe a one-year or two-year at the most, you know, time period for that, waiving that restriction, because I'd like to get back away from that if we can. That's the only thing I have to say right now. Your resume looked great.
Oh, thank you very much.
Doug Jones?
I would concur with Mr. Brown, maybe with a little bit different tack. I do think this is a job that really, it is useful to have the person living in town because of the kinds of issues that are going to come up. So I would like, prefer to reconsider the waiver in a year or two, as opposed to saying it's only good for a year.
Maybe check back in.
Yeah. Point of order, I don't think that this is the proper time to discuss that, given the circumstance. That's an issue on, different from, you know, welcoming Greg onto our staff here and his particular requirements right now. And I have plenty of arguments why I think it's not reasonable to do that because of the cost of housing, but I don't want to get into that because I don't think it's the right time.
It is our only time to do it. So, Sam, we're being asked to waive the requirement. This is our only chance actually to debate the issue.
Well, I move that we endorse the hiring of Greg Endicott to Facilities Manager, and that we waive the residency requirement for him.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second that only on the condition that we do revisit in two years and see if it's a possibility. And if not, then we'll understand the reasons why, if there are important reasons, if that's acceptable.
So, I just don't know in terms of when, you know, an offer is made, I just, I'm not sure if that's the, Nancy, are you raising your hand? Go ahead, you're muted, sorry.
I can wait. I guess I just wanted to weigh in and say that, that I'm not sure that it's reasonable if he's been hired and we are being asked to approve that. I'm not sure it's reasonable to say that we need to give him one to two years to revisit or to make sure that he is able to move to Falmouth. I disagree with that.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is it makes sense on a policy level to have a broader conversation with the Town Manager about future hires and how much you weight the criteria of someone living locally, but to offer a job, you know, moving is no small thing. You know, I don't know Mr. Endicott's situation, but people have families that they take care of. Sometimes they have children, or, you know, property is not something that's easily sort of transferred, and it is not an inexpensive place to come and move to. So I think, you know, we're looking for the most qualified individual to bring their talents to bear. But, you know, and I think we can, to Doug Jones' point, I think we can put on a future agenda, you know, a discussion about our policy long-term in terms of hiring and how we weight that criteria. Sam, and then Julian?
Yeah, I just want to say to Greg, Greg, this is not something personal, please.
I understand.
This, this is a discussion we really should be having, independent of you coming on board with us.
Agreed, thanks.
Really appreciate your joining this force because it looks like you're very well-qualified and should serve the town very well. So thank you for doing that.
I appreciate it.
And when you look at the increase in cost of housing here, you're going to have to ask the question, how much more this town is willing to pay for people in order to be able to afford to buy here? I only know of one staff, member of our staff that's actually been able to move to Falmouth after they've been hired, and there's a good reason for that. So, Greg, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Doug?
Then I would second Mr. Patterson's motion, the way it was put forward, but put a request on a future agenda item that we revisit the residency requirement, because for us to have it, in the past six years, we've never used it. It's not a requirement.
Great, thank you. I agree. I think it bears taking a look at.
I have one more question then.
Oh, go, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Susso, yes.
Yep, go ahead, Julian, and then Doug Brown.
I was just going to ask Public Works Director Peter McConerty to join us. I'm glad to see that Peter's on the screen. He may wish to make some similar congratulatory and welcoming comments about Greg, and that's, want to get, afford that opportunity.
My guess is that Peter, it's been pretty lean over in your part of town for a while as far as leadership. You know, we got you, and I don't know, everybody, everybody seemed to retire, but I know, I know it wasn't because of you, but it just was crazy timing. So I'm sure someone with Greg's abilities is going to be really welcomed to really step into that important role. So welcome, if whatever you'd like to share with us, we're happy to hear.
Yeah, thank you. When I come on, you probably saw me, I was, I was texting with the IT department to get, to be able to get on. Yeah, I'm delighted for this appointment of Greg Endicott. I think it'd be, it'd be a great asset to Public Works. We had a, we had a very large candidate pool, and we were able to go through all the candidates, and Greg obviously came out in front. I mean, I think his, I think his background, his previous experience, I think he's going to work out well in the facilities department, and his personality, I think is going to be a good fit within the department. So I'm delighted.
That's great. Thank, thank you for sharing that. Any other questions?
I just will say one last note is that back in 2017, I did end up moving to Falmouth after we, once becoming the Deputy Director, but as, as you had said, Megan, it's a, it's no small feat. It's a, it's a big feat.
Yeah.
I mean, it's easy, it's an easier commute for me. I'm always available in my position now, but it's a big undertaking.
So, Mr. Endicott, the only reason I mention it is there's so many times that a pipe will break in the middle of the night, and you gotta jump in your vehicle and come down, and it's just, you'll probably want to move after you see how many little emergencies we have.
I do appreciate that, and in my current position, I am managing properties in Hyannis, Falmouth, Nantucket, the Islands, Fairhaven, Mashpee, and I have had issues, you know, the middle of the night, any time of day that I have had to come in, and it's never, it's never really been an issue coming from Plymouth for emergencies such as that.
Okay, so you must have a pretty fast vehicle.
Hovercraft. The Steamship Authority has some secret vehicles.
Okay, all right.
Wonderful, Greg. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, English Braga, aye. Welcome. Look forward to working with you. Take care.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, next, we have special events, a new recommended. This is something that came before us, parking lot rental for wedding ceremony, Turner. It's the Turner Ceremony, Manot Beach East Lot, Saturday, September 18, 2021, 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. This is the event that we had talked about. It's looking to just rent the spots, or not rent, or have 40 spots at the public parking. And we had talked about how that's somewhat problematic because they're paying a fee, and yet we're not going to reserve 40 spots for them. So it's really first come, first served. And they are going to use, they did say they're going to use a shuttle to go back and forth. So Nancy had raised the question as to sort of, if it was appropriately coming back before us, because we had talked about the fact that it didn't seem like this was something that we generally did. So I didn't know if, if Frank is on, I'm not sure.
He may not be on yet.
I'm just going to try and scroll through. I just wanted to get a sense from him if, I don't think anyone had recalled this ever being something we had done before, as far as renting.
Why is it back? I thought we agreed to just let them park at their own risk.
That, that's what I, that was my understanding, and so I was just kind of surprised that it came back into our packet, and I wasn't sure why it was before us.
I think Diane had it back in, just for clarification purposes, to affirm to the board that that stipulation has been added to the permit that public parking is on a first-come, first-served basis. So I think it was just closing the loop.
I do see that. Oh, go ahead, Doug, excuse me.
I was gonna say, I'd rather not receive the fee. I'd rather just make it our policy, and it would be in line with the school department's policy that you don't have any exclusive rights to any spots. If you want to use it, you can go ahead. If it's not available, it's because other public members are using it. If we accept the fee, it infers that we're making a deal.
I would move that we take no action.
Okay.
Have a second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Patterson, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sam.
Just quick, if we didn't, if we had taken some action, then the minute, the previous minutes are not correct. So right now, those minutes say there was no, they don't indicate any action taken. So I think perhaps this keeps us exactly there.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Yep, Julian, go ahead.
Just to clarify then, is the board asking not to see this any further?
Yes, I think that's it.
Taking no action on it?
Unless it's in a different matter, if they have some other requests, if they want to get married on the beach.
I am suggesting we neither accept or deny this, this request.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, I had a motion and a second, multiple seconds. Okay, all those in favor, by roll call. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you. Okay. We're a tiny bit early for our public hearings.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did you want to handle the Emerald House?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. Excuse me. Yes, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. Excuse me. Yes, um, so under summary of actions, vote to authorize license agreement with Farming Falmouth to allow operation of a community garden at Emerald House property located at sixty-seven Davisville Road. And I think that uh Peter, are you gonna just walk us through, obviously, we had the draft, the grant of a license in front of us, but just for the public, did you want to walk us through it and then we can have questions?
Sure, I would be happy to. The board will recall that uh you, we had a discussion of the, the two properties. The property that the Emerald House is on and the parcel that abuts it, both of which are owned by the town. There are a couple of planned projects in the work for that property, including leasing out the Emerald House itself. This community garden proposal, which was endorsed by the board previously, a play space that is headed up by Kathleen Haynes and advocates for uh an all-access uh disability-friendly play space and affordable housing. This community gardens, uh, we have a license agreement that um, community gardens has an umbrella organization, Farming Falmouth is going to be the sponsor uh of the community garden. So we have a legal entity that we can issue a license to to allow them to go ahead and pursue that community garden. It is, the location of the community garden is restricted to that one parcel of land and it is specifically for the space or the area that is really already cleared. So this doesn't require uh additional road building or extensive clearing of any forested areas.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Peter?
I hope you will let them put their cover crop in ahead of this vote because it's so late.
Well, we really, that was, that was a, a legal and a liability issue, so we.
I know, such a shame, but oh well.
Seems like an appropriate use of that property, given its history.
I certainly agree with it. I think we've been talking about it for quite a long time and
Long time.
I've never heard any negative comments from anybody. The East Falmouth Village Association is very supportive.
Great. Any other questions for Peter? Okay, I'm just looking to see if there's any comments in the public. I don't see any. Um, so unless anyone has any questions, I would take a motion if anyone has one.
I would move approval.
Patterson, second.
There's your second. Daisy, second. Um, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. And Doug? Brown?
I vote aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Peter, very much.
Okay, right, um, we have um couple of minutes, but I think it'll take me a while to read the notice of public hearing. So I'll just start with that. We have um petition for change of name from Agassi's Road to Jewel Cobb Road. So notice of public hearing for change of street name. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter eighty-five, Section three, the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on the petition of Paula Pace et al. to change the name of a public way in the village of Woods Hole from Agassi's Road to Jewel Cobb Road. The hearing will be held on Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty at seven thirty P M. in the Suckman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall. And then we have the notice of um how to participate via Zoom. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, um, general laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty relating to the twenty twenty novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the November nine, twenty twenty public meeting of the Falmouth Select Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. See Select Board Notice of Meeting for November nine, twenty twenty to be posted on the Town of Falmouth website, W W dot Falmouth, Mass dot U S. Um, Agenda Center on November fifth, twenty twenty at four P M. for detailed participation information for her order of the Select Board, excuse me, publication date was Friday, October sixteenth, Falmouth Enterprise. Um, and so welcome, Ms. Pace, I see, I see you here. Oh, there you are. You just need to unmute yourself. Great, we should be able to hear you now. Thank you. And if I can start, um Julian, can you just maybe, um, we haven't had a change of street name in a while. So um could you just sort of procedurally just explain to folks what, or Peter, whomever is um got the stuff in front of them, just kind of the process for how we get here. So that the public, if they haven't been following, can understand how we come to have this matter before us tonight.
Well, I can make a few introductory comments.
Thank you.
Happy to have Peter uh fill in as well. Uh, the town was contacted, of course, by uh Ms. Pace and, and others. I guess there are actually seven properties on that particular uh street. It's a relatively short street in Woods Hole, as the board is aware, um, expressing a concern about the uh uh individual uh and their past record uh in terms of uh social activity and social action and philosophy, uh in addition to um their uh scientific standing that uh really uh represented uh uh the uh an inappropriate approach to uh uh to really being welcoming and diverse as our community is. And uh there was a petition process that was started uh first with those on the uh property, but also those that own property on the road, but also in the broader Woods Hole and community and beyond. Uh, and uh the response, from what I understand, was uh very, very strong uh from the community, not surprising. And also the uh M B L also weighed in and made a suggestion about a successor name. And I know that's part of the record here that the board has as well and that'll be commented upon further. So uh, Town Council confirmed that this is an action that the Select Board could take after the appropriate steps, including a public hearing. And that brings us uh to tonight with all the appropriate advertising, which you've summarized, Madam Chair, and happy to have Peter and others uh weigh in as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Suss. So Peter, did you want to um give a few uh remarks?
Sure, just very briefly on, on the process, there is a general law that authorizes the Select Board to take this action. Uh, and it is a uh, a very general, general law. It's, it's pretty vague. It does say that uh residents can petition the Select Board to change the name of the town. It doesn't provide for any required reasons. Uh, and really doesn't lay out a lot of detail about what the hearing is supposed to look like. Um, it just generally references that uh the board can hold a hearing at the if a petition is submitted by residents to change the name of a road. That has been the advice from Town Council.
Great, thank you. Yes, Doug Jones?
This is much more a comment on the process than on whether we should do it. I would suggest that we hold the hearing tonight, but not hold the vote until we've really had a chance for it, people to know this hearing has been held, discussion has been taken place. I'm very much in favor of doing this, but I just think in the process, it makes sense to not try to vote this tonight.
Okay, a- and that is in, in um keeping with what we've tried to do with some issues like this, which is have the discussion so that sometimes the public, it's not on their radar till it, it happens at a meeting and perhaps makes it into the paper um or other, some other social media. Um, so uh we can talk about that process piece. So um let me start by um just welcoming you uh Ms. Pace, if you want to just share a little bit about um the request that you are making. And I know you're not making it alone. You have a number of other individuals. Um, but if you just want to, for the public, explain why um you're making this request.
Okay, well, I have a statement. Is it all right if I just go ahead and make it? Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening and thank you for giving me your valuable time um to this petition. Um, my name is Paula Pace and I live on Agassi Road. I started the petition with my friend and colleague Ruth Gaynor, who is also now on and, and many others contributed. Back in March two thousand nineteen, I read in the New York Times about Tamara Lanier's lawsuit against Harvard to get possession of photographs of her enslaved ancestors. These photographs were commissioned by Louis Agassi and donated to Harvard. Louis Agassi, I learned, was a polygenist who believed in the superiority of the white race. He used his science along with dehumanizing photographs in support of his theory. My very strong wish is to live on a road and in a community that is welcoming to people of all backgrounds, races, and ethnicities. I was deeply touched by the statement of George Langford, um, a scientist associated with the M B L. I paraphrase, "You have no idea how painful it is for young people of color and young people whom Dr. Langford had encouraged to work in the lab when they see a sign honoring a racist like Agassi." No doubt Louis Agassi should be and will be remembered for his contribution to science. And given the issue before you, there's a chance that he will not be forgotten, neither his science nor his racism. Changing the name of this road gives us, our Woods Hole Falmouth community, the opportunity to make a declaration of who we want to be, how we want to be seen as a community that is truly welcoming to all. It is visionary, forward-thinking, and so important, particularly in these divisive times. And how amazing that over six hundred people, two hundred eighty from the Falmouth area chose to sign a petition to replace the name of a little road in Woods Hole with only seven residences. A symbolic gesture, yes, but also a community's commitment to acknowledging and addressing racism in the past and now. And who better to honor and acknowledging, eh, eh, who better to honor in renaming the road than Dr. Jewel Cobb, a brilliant and dedicated African-American scientist with deep ties to Woods Hole Falmouth and the M B L? And we are beyond pleased that Dr. Patel, Director of the M B L, submitted a letter to you, I think, um, Mr. Sussa mentioned that, the Select Board in support of Dr. Jewel Cobb. So I urge you to decide in favor of changing the name, Agassi Road to Jewel Cobb Road. And I also reiterate our request in the letter accompanying the petition. If you approve the name change, that you delay putting the change in effect until June twenty twenty-one, I don't know if you can do that. Um, to provide residents of the road time to make the necessary arrangements in their personal affairs to, you know, because of that. So on behalf of all who signed the petition and all others who are in support, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Gaynor, did you want to make any comments? You just have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
There you go.
I can hear you, yeah. Uh, good evening and thank you very much for this opportunity tonight. Our petition was written by a group that formed after more than a year and a half of neighborhood discussions and research. A conversation circle about the issue was held in the Woods Hole Community Hall in August twenty nineteen. It was attended by fifty people. When the petition posted this summer, it received six hundred signatures, as Paula said, uh, two hundred eighty of them from verified residents of Falmouth. We're still receiving requests from residents who wished to sign and others praising the choice of Jewel Cobb Road as the replacement name for Agassi Road. It is not surprising that many from a wider swath of the Cape and from around the country and even abroad have signed our petition. Woods Hole and Falmouth are known around the world for many attractions, including their six scientific institutions. Many are fascinated by the street name tributes to scientists uh that they see throughout Woods Hole. But we have learned that many others are deeply hurt and discouraged to see the name of Louis Agassi honored on a roadside. Agassi made significant achievements in geology and biology in the early and mid eighteen hundreds. In early twenty nineteen, we were shocked to learn that he had devoted the last years of his career, his years in the United States, to promoting his vehement theories of white supremacy and racial hierarchy. Until then, only a whitewashed version of his story was known to our community. Changing the street name in no way erases history, as a few have charged. In fact, the petition has generated interest in history. The facts of Louis Agassi's life and work are still available where they belong in libraries, universities, and museums. Some excuse Agassi's racism by saying that he was a product of his times. But Agassi wasn't a passive bystander. He actively tried to advance the racist theory of polygenism while other scientists discredited it, as did the abolitionist movement of the time and Frederick Douglass the statesman. Since I arrived in Woods Hole in nineteen sixty-nine, I have heard calls every year for a more diverse community, particularly at the scientific institutions, but that hasn't been achieved. Agassi is a short road, but it has widespread significance. Agassi's veneration has turned people away from deciding to locate here. Instead of a sign that stands for the racism inherent to our community, we want the road named for Dr. Jewel Cobb, an African-American scientist who worked in M B L, lived in Falmouth, her family still has a house here. Became the president of an important university, California State uh Fullerton. And throughout her distinguished career, encouraged young women and underserved minorities to pursue professions in the sciences. The name change will symbolize this community's rejection of racism and signal efforts to create a more hospitable environment for all. Thank you very much for your attention to this vital issue.
Thank you very much. Um, so it, I'm just looking from Peter's comment, uh, it seems that he did communicate that the board would sort of be hearing this, holding a hearing, um, taking any comments if people made them and then voting on it in a, at a future date. So I would hear anything from this board. Um, if there are any questions, concerns, or thoughts that they want to share now, and I'm just gonna keep an eye as to whether or not there's any other public comment. Yes, Sam?
Yeah, I, I taught science as a career and studied science as well as a physicist. Um, and certainly, science has had these kinds of biases, if you will, that weren't necessarily supported by scientific information. And I think it's important to recognize that today we have, we understand DNA, you know? We can actually go and do traces of DNA mutations as populations have moved around the earth. None of that information was available at the time. So I, I don't want to be an apologist for Louis Agassi's position because I think it stemmed out of biases that, you know, he was born into in a culture. But I do believe that we should not keep that name up as something that represents what we feel today and what we know today from having studied this as, in a much broader scientific way. And so uh, the argument that we shouldn't be erasing history here, well, that's not what we're trying to do. In fact, we want to learn from history. But I think you, the same thing could be said of the Confederate officer statues that we see taken down throughout the South. Um, there's a recognition that, you know, we don't want that to be the symbol of who we are today. And I, I really strongly support this initiative to change that street name to someone that we feel is more exemplary of what we should be as people.
Thank you, Sam. Doug?
So I'm one person who is generally opposed to removing statues, even if it's Confederate. I mean, it's not our neighborhood, so I don't really have to decide about that, but I don't like wiping out history, but in this case, I think the guy doesn't really deserve to have a street named after him. And if all the neighbors on the street are in agreement and so much support, I would see, I certainly agree with it. But we did have some comments that I thought were pretty interesting and thoughtful from some of the people that were not really directly involved, but just uh had commented on it. And one person said that perhaps it would be appropriate to put a little plaque, maybe on the bottom of the street sign, saying this road was formerly known as Agassi's Road and just kind of give a and just kind of give a little bit of history of why the name was changed. I don't know if that's something that anyone would think was appropriate, but I just wanted to throw out that was a comment that we received. I thought it was an interesting comment, so.
Anything else? Doug Jones?
I just really like the idea of the road going after Jewel Cobb. I think it's a great recognition of what she has done, more so than a removal of Agassi. I don't think there's any real reason why that road was named after him. I don't think he ever lived there. I don't think there was anything all that much that he did in Woods Hole. I know he has been a part of the philosophy of the children's school science, but I don't think he connects to Woods Hole in any meaningful way as a way that Jewel Cobb does. And so I'm in favor of this just for the reason that she is very, very deserving of this recognition.
Yep. And just Nancy, did you want to, I just didn't want to talk over anybody. Did you have anything to say? You know, I just want to say that I think sometimes we say these are symbols, but that, I think, really minimizes what they, how they impact people. You know, for some of us, we can walk by a statue or name of a road, and it may just seem, we use that word symbolic, but it is not for folks for whom that really touches them and, you know, means something very specific to them. It's more than a symbol. It's really part of a larger system that they're interacting with and are kind of, you know, coming up against, you know, levels of discrimination and bias. And depends on whatever it is that you're, you know, you can look at any type of situation that you want to come from. But we really have to, I think, broaden that conversation, that these are more than just symbols. They are really barriers, as we have heard from some individuals, to really feeling fully accepted and integrated into, if, in particular, when we're talking about the science community or the, you know, Falmouth community. So, you know, I think they have something more than just kind of symbolic sometimes makes it sound like it's cursory, and it really can be much more than that. So I'm just checking to see if we have any public comment. And I don't think that we do. So I, I think what we would do is hold this over. Do we need a vote to continue it, or just, this is just a hearing to have the conversation? And then we would put it on for a vote on an upcoming agenda, so that there's a little bit more time for any other public comment to come in. And then in our coming, in the next few weeks, we do have town meeting coming up next week. So sometime in November or early December, this would be on our agenda for a vote. Okay?
Second.
Sam, did you have?
Patterson, second.
Okay, so there's a motion to put it on November 23rd, a second.
That's to close the hearing and put it on that.
Okay. Close the hearing. Yep.
If we're still taking testimony in written form, is it okay to close the hearing?
I think we should just continue the hearing to November 23rd, so that we can take, if anybody happens to give us written comment, we can take that and include that in the record.
I believe that we continue this until 30 p.m.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Great. Thank you very much, ladies. Really appreciate it. We'll see you on November 23rd.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a, not related to this, but I have a kind of a special request. I made another mistake tonight. Last week at our last meeting, I neglected to make a public comment that was forwarded by email. Fire Department. And then this week, I was supposed to read a public comment. Is it possible I can just read this and then we put it in the minutes in the proper location? Is that too out of order?
Sure. Is it a public comment about nothing on the agenda?
It is. It's just about the fire station location, and it's a Hatchville resident who wanted to share their concerns. Was it, would that be like illegal, or is there any kind of problem with that, Mr. Souza?
None that I'm aware of.
No, I, I've said that I take public comment if it comes in. No, if it comes in late, you're, no, please go ahead. I remember the email that you're talking about, so.
And I had it printed, and then I set it aside over here, and I, I don't want to keep going on with this.
Go ahead.
This is from Edward and Kathy Valeriani, and they live in Hatchville. And they said, here, Select Board, firstly, I would like to thank the future fire station citizens advisory committee for their valuable work and recommendations on the important issue of where to site the future fire station. I respectfully ask that when making your decision as to the sighting of the new fire station, that you keep in mind the following highlights from the statement that I shared at the forum back in January 2020. Her neighborhood, my neighborhood, Asshument Valley, and I have worked with the town and the fire department for 30 years to bring a fire station to Hatchville. Before the economy tanked in 2008, it was always understood that the next fire station would be built in Hatch. We are the only large area of town without a fire rescue station. Our current response times are nine, 12-plus minutes, which is way too long for medical cardiac rescue. Concerning fire rescue, burn times decades ago were 17 minutes. Today, they're three minutes. Our neighborhood is adjacent to the base with aircraft that take off, fly over our homes, and land on a daily basis. While one recommended location is the northwest area of Falmouth, I feel that this site should be the least of the choices as North and West already have stations. I'm aware that West Falmouth staffing issue, which is what, which I have faith will be resolved in the future. I ask that you strongly consider the Sandwich Road locations so that our area of town and the adjacent areas can have much more improved response times and will bring more equitable service to the entire town. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to comment. Sincerely, Kathy Valeriani, Sandwich Road, in Asshument Valley. Thank you for allowing me to fit that in.
Yep. Nope. Thank you for remembering to bring that. I know they had requested that. Okay, next, we have a fee hearing. And I didn't see a public notice about it. I don't think we, did we, we didn't have to have a public notice, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that was, there's a copy in the board's packet.
Yes, I have a copy of it.
Could, okay, could you read it, Sam? I don't seem to have a copy of the public notice. Maybe I just misplaced it.
Let's see. It's small print, so I'll stumble a little bit. As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in the Select Board's meeting room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, November 9th, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January 1st, 2021, to be charged by the town departments and agencies, except as provided by MGL, the school department, planning board, library, town clerk, town treasurer, and collector of taxes. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the November 9th, 2020, public meeting of the Falmouth Select Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. See Select Board notice of meeting in the November 9th, 2020 to be positive, posted, excuse me, on the town of Falmouth website, www.falmouthmass.us, Agenda Center, on November 5th, 2020, at 4 p.m. for the detailed participation information. And then it goes, because it gives you the list of features.
Thank you, Sam. Sorry, I see, I see that now, and then I see a larger version of one of these pages. So sometime, we thank Diane for double siding because it's green and it keeps the packets from being huge. But every once in a while, when you get some of these long run-on items, it can get tricky sometimes if you put it away too soon. Okay, so just a process piece. I think in general, and Doug, just remind me, I, I feel that in the last, the last few times you've done this, we've talked about the fees, and then we have voted on them on another date, correct? Okay.
I think we have to read them all.
Yes. So I don't mind. I can start, and then we read them all into the record. We'll have a discussion about them, and I will go from there. So here are the.
Only ones that are changes that we have to read.
Yes, the proposed changes in the fees are listed below, and then I'll go through. So Department, Board of Assessors, present fee none, proposed fee 50. It's a full copy of database. Fire Department, copies. Incident report, $5 a copy, proposed fee delete. Ambulance statements, $5 a copy, proposed fee delete. 21E copies, $0.20 a copy, delete is the proposed. Brush burning permit, resident, senior, citizen, present fee five, proposed fee delete. Resident, non-resident, present fee 10, proposed fee delete. Agricultural, commercial brush burning permit, annual, present fee none, proposed fee 50. Dumpster permit inspection, combined separate fees, $25. Oil burner permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Liquid propane tank permit inspection, storage, storage, combined separate fees, $75. Storage tanks, above-ground, underground tank installation permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Above-ground, underground tank removal permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Unvented gas heater permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Carbon monoxide alarm installation permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Fire alarm testing and maintenance fees. Certification and training, 50, proposed fee delete. Annual permit renewal, present fee 25, proposed fee delete. Fire alarm monitoring fee, present fee 200 a year, proposed fee delete. Violations of the policy, first offense, $100, proposed fee delete. Second offense, $200, proposed fee delete. Third offense, $1,000 in revocation of permit, proposed fee delete. Failure to place first alarm, excuse me, failure to place fire alarm system in test mode fees, first incident per calendar year, present fee is none, proposed fee free. Second incident per calendar year, present none, proposed 100. Third incident per calendar year, present none, proposed 100. Fourth incident per calendar year, present none, proposed 100. Fifth incident per calendar year, present none, proposed 500. Automatic fire suppression installation permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Alarm, fire alarm system installation permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Fire sprinkler system installation permit and inspection, combined separate fees, $50. Fire alarm municipal master box connection or disconnection box, 150, proposed delete. Commercial inspections, per inspection up to four times per year, cleans up the wording, $50 is proposed. After-hours and weekend inspections, current is none, proposed is $225 per event. Reinspection, cleans up wording, proposed is 50. Inspection services, alterations of less than $1,000.
I would just stop at fire.
Okay.
Discuss that as a separate event.
Okay, so any discussion, questions about the fire department? I know in our packet, there's a letter that really just outlines, you know, really why those proposals have been made. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I would just point out that most of the deletions are replacement by combined fees inspection. That they're not really deleting these fees. They're just being placed under a, another category. People think that everyone's getting for free. It's not really happening that way.
Yep.
And the only big change from the fire is the 225 for the weekend inspection of special events, which I think is legitimate because they got to come in on the weekend because a lot of special events happen at that time.
Right.
Agreed.
Okay. Any questions on those? No? Okay. And did anyone, I should have said, under Board of Assessors, we did get a separate list. Did anyone have, I think there was a separate list? Did anyone have any questions? It was all the proposed 50, it's just making them all $50. All right, I will go on to inspectional services then. Alterations of less than $1,000 estimated construction value being performed by homeowner or on homeowner occupied building only, current none, proposed delete. Sheet metal mechanical residential, $8 per 1,000, $75 minimum is the current, proposed is $8 per 1,100 minimum. Sheet metal mechanical commercial, $8 per 1,000, $75 minimum is current, proposed is $8 per 1,100 minimum. Sheet metal mechanical, excuse me, sign permit, $25 per sign is the current. That doesn't, this doesn't make sense. Does that make sense to folks?
Nope.
Oh.
No. Okay, so let's put a little note there. I think there's a typo there. So you can get some clarification, Mr. Souza, on the sign permit?
Will do.
Thank you. It just looks like something got copied incorrectly. Photocopies, 5 cents per page, proposed delete. Plumbing residential first fixture, $40, proposed 45. Plumbing residential each additional feature, $10, proposed 12. Plumbing commercial first fixture, $65, proposed 70. Plumbing commercial additional fixture, 15, proposed 18. Gas residential first appliance, 40, proposed 45. Gas residential additional appliance, 10, proposed 12. Gas commercial first appliance, 65, proposed 70. Gas commercial additional appliance, 15, proposed 18. Electrical swimming pool, above-ground, 50, proposed 150. Electrical solar residential, commercial, 50, $10 per kilowatt, $100 minimum. Electrical alterations, remodels, and additions, 50, proposed 75. Electrical temp and change of service, 50, proposed 100. Electrical generators residential, commercial, 50, proposed 100. Any discussion about that?
I don't know why they have to charge so much per kilowatt for solar installation. We're trying to promote it.
I'm just going through to take a look and see.
It's a pretty easy inspection. You just drive by, look at the panels, and then check out and see if the connections are made correctly. I don't know.
It doesn't, I agree with you. It doesn't seem like the cost is scalable.
Right.
So let's put a little note there that we can maybe get some feedback on that as well, since we're going to talk about it again. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Marine Environmental Services, moorings, dingey rack, none, proposed 25. Slips, warfage, charter boat section, R23, R24, 10% discount, remove. Any questions on that? Okay. Police Department. And I'll say ahead of time, I know we have comments about, about this section, so we'll get through it, and then we can take some comment. Police Department Parking, overtime meter parking, current 10, proposed 50. Within 20 foot of intersection, current 25, proposed 100. Upon crosswalk or sidewalk, propose, excuse me, current 25, proposed 50. Over one foot from curb, 25, proposed 50. Wrong direction, 25, proposed 50. Double park, 25, proposed 50. Improper angle, 25, proposed 50. Prohibited area, 25, proposed 50. Across private way or drive, 25, proposed 50. Less than 10 feet, unobstructed lane, greater than, sorry. Sorry, Doug. 25, proposed 50. All-night parking, 50, proposed 75. Snow removal, 25, proposed 50. Parking within space required, 25, proposed 50. Park, permit parking only resident, 25, proposed 50. Loading zone, 25, proposed 50. Fire lane, 25, proposed 50. Expired inspection sticker, none, proposed 50. Expired invalid registration, none, proposed 50. Go ahead, Doug Jones.
Two that I want to talk about are actually, it's funny, but the question I have about overtime meter parking, is that also the same thing for overtime parking in our three-hour parking area in Main Street? Which is not meter.
You know, Mr. Souza?
That's my understanding, and I think we have Chief Dunn with us, if you'd like to bring him into the conversation as well.
What I would like to propose is that for both of those, whether it's meter or the three-hour, that the first ticket be $20, and then any subsequent ticket. And I'm not sure whether that should be after an hour or after additional three hours, would then be the $50.
Okay. If we can bring in the chief, if he's here. I know, just so we're trying to get him on, I know we, we saw some of the concerns he raised. Here he comes now.
I have another question for.
Go ahead, Sam. Yep, while he's coming on.
I don't see, I don't see any fines in here for multiple false burglar alarms, and I didn't know whether that is a problem and should be, you know, penalized.
Where would that be under, under, under police?
I would assume so. I think, you know, some people have their. I would assume so, I think, uh, you know, uh, some people have their burglar alarms connected to the, the, um, uh, the combined dispatch system.
I think there is a fee for that, it just isn't being changed.
Okay.
So we can ask the chief and clarify. I see him, I can't see him, but Chief, are you with us?
You.
You're breaking up. We'll give him, we'll give him a minute maybe. Yeah, it's pretty broken up, maybe, um, Greg could, maybe the chief can just call in if that's easier, maybe we can try and work on that. And while we do that, we can just raise, um, just, just discuss the issue that Doug brought up, which was raised by some folks, particularly in Woods Hole, around the issue of the initial fifty-dollar ticket. Um, noting that, you know, they felt they fully agreed with what the chief was saying, that we really want to discourage those folks who basically park and, um, go over for the day to the vineyard and, you know, pay less than they would if they were parking at the steamship authority and, and really just take the ticket and that's that. Um, but balancing that out with the fact that there's also, you know, folks who come to lunch or, and it might take a little bit longer, or, you know, there might be some confusion, and they're hit with that initial fifty-dollar ticket. Um, Nancy?
Yeah, I was just gonna, uh, reiterate the same thing, that the Woods Hole Community Association, I believe, is not in favor of a fifty-dollar fee for the first. So I, I bring that forward because it was, um, emailed us and they opposed that.
I thought Catherine Bumpus had a good suggestion, would, uh, maybe keep the initial one at ten dollars if it's just a simple mistake. But if the car remains there and goes over another hour, you can get a second or third violation in the same day. So you could potentially spend ninety dollars if you put your car there and go to the vineyard, thinking you're only gonna pay ten. But if we do that, we should include signage and say warning, maximum daily fine, ninety dollars per day.
Or whatever it might be in a twenty-four hour period.
Right.
Yep.
And then the next day you could start over with brand-new fines, if the car is still there.
That could probably, yeah, that could probably be included in the message on these meters, which is electronic.
Looks like the chief is maybe trying to come back on here. Yeah, Beth Colt is just reminding us that they, that the cars get towed at two AM, because there's no overnight parking. So that's the ultimate, that's the ultimate penalty is to come back and your, your car is gone, but, um, Chief, are you with us?
Thank you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I can see you now too.
Okay, well, we can't see you, but we can hear you. So, um, I don't know how much of this, of this you heard, but, um, the board was just asking, um, to have you weigh in on, on maybe a graduated, you know, first ticket is twenty or, or some amount, ten dollars, and then after that, you know, depending on what the next, you know, if it's over by another hour, then that, then it jumps up to that steeper amount. We were wondering what your thought was on that. Ah, seems like it's not a good tech night for chief. So what we'll do is since we're gonna hear this, um, yep, Julian, go ahead. You just have to unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, I won't, uh, attempt to talk fully on behalf of the chief, but I can tell you that he and I have spoken about the potential for a graduated system and, uh, he feels that he can work with that if that's a desire of the board. Uh, we would just hope that it be, that it a sufficient amount to be a disincentive for the day trips to the vineyard, which, uh, take all these parking spaces away from the businesses and the residents who live in Woods Hole.
Great point. And, and it's the same on, on Main Street, I mean, we want that turnover on Main Street, you know, as well, so, um, you know, it's less of an issue than Woods Hole, just because of the nature of the more parking. But, um, you know, those, those prime spots on Main Street are important, especially on a rainy day, so it's turning those over. Chief, can you hear us now, or can we hear you?
I can hear you, I'm gonna turn it on then.
Okay. Um, so we'll see if the chief can call in, but, um, I don't wanna use up his time either, we're happy to just have him, um, come back and, and, you know, weigh in on that for the next time that we hear this as well, I don't want him to spend his whole night trying to connect.
I would move that, uh, we consider the, um, graduated fee, as I had discussed earlier. And if the chief is okay with that, I'd like to make that our, our policy if we can do it.
Okay. Great, so I think what we would do is we would, go ahead, Sam?
No, I'm, I'm with you, I think this should be, come up later. Um, it's fine to have that thought put out there, but the final decision should really wait until we have a, a weigh-in on the fee schedule. This is more or less done to let everybody know.
Right, we're not voting tonight anyway, they just wanna throw that out there, that I think it's a good idea.
Great, thank you, sounds like that seems to be the consensus of the board, Doug Jones?
Are you thinking after an hour or after the next three hours?
I, I mean, what do you, yeah, what is your thought, Doug Brown?
Well, I don't know exactly, I'd have to give that a little more thought for the next meeting, exactly how it'd be implemented, I just got the idea from Catherine tonight, so, but I think it's a good one if it can be worked out.
But if it's three more, one thing to just bear in mind is if the first ticket is twenty dollars or ten dollars, and the next one after three more hours is fifty, that may still not be a disincentive if it's, you know, a total of sixty dollars for six hours of parking. That may not be a disincentive, you know, to really have people move along, you know, that convenience, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What if it's ten, and then, what, what's the maximum amount of time on one of those meters, do you know?
Well, only nine to, they only operate from, I think, nine to six. Three hours, six that, or maybe it was ten to six. After that, they're not operating anymore, we don't charge them for it. So if they do pay, put money into the meter, they do get the three hours. After that, it's only, you know, another five. So I still like the idea of the first one being twenty and the all subsequent ones being fifty, but I would do it every hour.
That, that's what I was going to say, that if it, it, it's a steeper climb. Because again, yeah, go ahead Sam.
Yeah, and that is sure is turnover even among locals. Because there could be people who, you know, they could throw that money, amount of money away. Um, so why not just go ahead and abuse it, you know, and, and I, you know, so I, I see this as a, a turnover motivator, if you will, whether it's somebody going to the vineyard or even somebody local.
We also need to educate the people in Woods Hole, that for any meters, it is a three-hour limit. It's not a three-hour and then you re-feed it. That you will also get a ticket if you're there more than three hours, even if the meter is refed.
Right. Nancy, you had your hand up?
I, I was just thinking, when you said something about hourly, I just wondered, does that mean that the police have to write something every hour on someone, on a car that's still there?
Yep.
How much work, I'm just, I'm just thinking about how much work that puts on to them to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I know for in Woods Hole, they're, they're going through, but we can get, yep, Julian?
During, during the busy season, we have an officer assigned, uh, the chief, routinely, occasionally manpower becomes a problem, but fairly routinely, we have a, uh, a, uh, an enforcement person in Woods Hole, specifically for that reason, who also can assist as needed downtown. So it's not taking a police officer off the street, we need another duty.
I guess I would agree then with, with Mr. Jones with the twenty-dollar initial and then fifty subsequent, because, uh, it's true, it does get abused, because ten dollars is not much to worry about, you know, twenty gets your attention.
We can hear you now, Chief.
Oh, that was a project.
Um, so, so basically, we were just talking about, um, and we're not gonna vote tonight, but, um, you know, the, it sounds like the board likes the idea of a graduated, you know, first ticket is maybe twenty, and then, um, you know, every hour after that goes up to that higher amount to really, um, you know, get people to move along.
Yeah, I, I've had, I had a conversation with Catherine this morning, and just so the board is aware, um, we had done that before with the ten and twenty.
Yep.
And there was a huge outcry from the Woods Hole population that we were being over aggressive. And it was done away with. But I'm open to that, and that's the conversation I had with Catherine too, was that, you know, it, it, it's something that can be done. But, um, as you, as you were well aware, if the fines don't meet the, um, criteria, then people are gonna continue to park there.
Yes. Yep, Doug Jones?
And Chief, is this a problem both with, uh, visitors going to the vineyard and workmen going to the vineyard?
Yeah, it's a combination of both, because, uh, in fact, um, our, our parking enforcement person, he, he's witnessed it firsthand, where he's watched people put money in the meter, grab their tools, grab their bags, and just walk over to the boat. And he's, he's even said to me, he says, you know, you, you, if you're gonna be back within three hours, great, but if you're not, you're gonna get tickets, and it's like, yep, we don't care.
Right.
I was thinking that maybe, not as strict in the summer, but during the off-season, maybe we can talk to the steamship authority and to the Woods Hole business people about the forty-five spots that we have in the steamship authority lot that are set aside for the business people, that maybe during the winter, we can make those available to some of these workmen instead.
Yeah, that, that, that would, that would be a good plan also.
Yep.
But I got, like I said, I've had the conversation, I'm not opposed to the progressive ticket, but again, we, we, we do need to increase, as you can see, I gave, I wanted the board to have as much information as possible, and you should have the chart of the different, um, fines throughout the Cape Cod area, and we are way under on those. Um, because we probably haven't done a fine increase probably since around two thousand eight or before.
Great. Thank you, and we, we also had, someone had a question about whether or not this applies to the Main Street three-hour limit as well.
Yes, it, it will, it's violation of the parking.
Okay. Was there, was there any other?
We are, we are, we are still using the electronic tickets up there, or the electronic parking machines where that it marks the car plate and lets us know when we come by again, whether or not they're in violation.
Okay, Doug Brown?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that one.
A fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, uh, the, the, the fee for the fire hydrant, is that what you're asking?
Is that considered prohibited area?
No, that, that's a whole separate, that's a whole separate, um, violation, if you're parked in front of a fire hydrant. There's one specific within ten feet of a fire hydrant.
Okay.
I, I got a question for the chief about signage, wha- what would we do if we're gonna increase the fees significantly? We should probably provide some improved signage to give people the heads-up, so they can be more careful.
I just think, I just think some good postings, I mean, I don't know about signage, because you'd, uh, I mean, you could put signage up, and again, it's a cost of the town to have the DPW do them and, and to, and to list all the violations. Um, I just think if we do some good advertising and, um, e- education, you know?
The word will spread very quickly.
Maybe you could put that, that mobile unit up, uh, you know, the first week that it starts or something like that?
Yeah, there, there's a number of things we can do, I mean, we, we, we have a lot of Facebook followers, we put that on Facebook, for the towns, Facebook page, our webpages. Um, I think it's just educating through, uh, I'm sure we get some information in the paper, and as I heard someone say, I don't know who said it, the word will spread very quickly.
Right.
Um, any other questions for the chief while we have him on any of these proposals?
I just wanna say, that's a good, good point about that Facebook page, you guys update that so quickly and all the road closures and stuff, that's great, good resource.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, just to take the opportunity, I know that's not, uh, before you at the moment, but, uh, the board may recall, uh, some years ago, the chief and I had advocated a two-hour parking limit as opposed to three. If you really wanna encourage turnover, three hours is a long time to be parked in a single spot. Uh, I know some people might take a lengthy lunch, um, but it is something to consider as well to encourage turnover, uh, for potential future action by the board.
Okay.
That might be a good idea, because if their lunch is exceeding two hours, they're probably drinking too much anyway.
Well, I know, I can tell you the last time that we talked about this, and the, the chief, I'm sure remembers this as, as do the other members, when we did sort of think about that, you know, uh, merchants and restaurant owners said, you know, it's kind of a package thing, like maybe have lunch and, and go to a shop. And, and so they were thinking of that, or in Woods Hole, you know, you have lunch and maybe you walk to the aquarium. Um, you know, so really encompassing a little bit more of just, not just the lunch, but the things that they might come to, to utilize that are also small businesses. You know, a little bit of shopping and a meal, um, but we can certainly get some feedback. But I know we had a lot of pushback from business owners about that.
Yeah.
I have, feel no compunction at all about charging, um, a high, hefty fine for their, going over that.
Yep, agreed. Okay, so if, if, um, we don't have any other questions for the chief, thank you, chief, we appreciate it.
Yep, you're welcome.
Appreciate the suggestions and all the information where those fees fall, thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next we have, um, zoning board of appeals, single-family dwel-, oh, I'm sorry.
There was a question about a fee for vehicle idling in the chat feature.
Yes. And the chief, chief has left us, but can we, Julian, um, in our, if you're, whoever's keeping tab of our things that we need to clarify, can we add to it whether or not there is a fee for vehicle idling? And if that's just not being changed, or if that does not exist at all?
Okay, we'll check on that.
Thank you. Um, okay. Next we have zoning board of appeals. Single-family dwelling and uses, current one-fifty, proposed two-hundred. Home-based service business, one-fifty, proposed two-hundred. Appeal of building commissioner, uh, building, yes, commission zoning commission, one-fifty, proposed two-hundred. Multi-family dwellings and uses, one-seventy-five, proposed two-hundred. All residential special permits, variances, appeals to take the place of the above four, uh, that would be two-hundred. Commercial properties, proposed, excuse me, current two-twenty-five, proposed five-hundred. Comprehensive permit application fees, nonprofit filing fee one-hundred, and then twenty-dollar, twenty-five dollars per unit is the current. The proposed is one-thousand and then twenty-five dollars per unit. For profit, the current is two-fifty and one-twenty-five per unit. Proposed is two-thousand and one-twenty-five per unit. Amendment fee fifty, proposed one-hundred. Doubled filing fee charged for work done prior to a permit. I guess that is just in, in reference to the above amendment?
Yes.
Right?
In case, in case you went ahead without a permit and you have to file after the fact, everything is doubled. That's a good idea.
Any questions about these fees?
We've had a high increase on the comprehensive permit application fee. I think that's probably because of the amount of work it does take for our department.
Right.
And the number of meetings, it's, it's never done, and a couple of meetings, they come back several times.
And is that one of the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Sam?
No, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the amount for nonprofits who are trying to do good things, and here we are laying an extra heavy fee on them. That, I'm not comfortable with that.
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Suso.
We have, uh, DPA Administrator Noreen Docman with us, if you'd like to, uh, speak with Noreen for any background on that.
Okay, sure, just, do you wanna hear some information on that? Um, welcome, Noreen. See her trying to come on here. Hi, how are you?
I am well, thank you.
Good, so we just had, um, primarily, it seems like the one question was regarding the, um, comprehensive permit application fees, particularly for nonprofits, and, and why the tenfold, um, increase?
Yeah, I do agree that it is expensive, I guess, in fact, um, what I would also offer the board is that it's also, uh, somewhat regular practice in many communities to actually waive filing fees for nonprofits. Um, so there is that opportunity as well. Um, but in general, the filing fees we've proposed to increase for two reasons. One reason is that the filing fee has been essentially excessively low. When you look at the cost for a single dwelling or Marshall or whatever, it's, it's not in line. But I think as the board has noted, the amount of time that is involved in these reviews, and actually the number of various departments that become involved. We've typically had a lot of engineering support in the past, and there's not been a way to capture that assistance that they've given us, and we've now actually moved to a slightly amended mode, just where we are utilizing some outside, uh, air engineering consultants to take the place of some of the engineering work.
Oops, sorry. There she is. Go ahead, Doug Jones.
What our policy is on waiving fees. If it's an application or inspection fee, I thought our policy said we could not waive it.
Yeah, that's my recollection is a inspectional fee cannot be waived, a application fee only, and you have a specific policy on that.
This application could, what Noreen's saying is true, that we could waive this application fee if we wanted.
Yeah, I believe so. That's my understanding.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Noreen? We're not going to vote tonight, but any other clarifications we need before we move on? Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I am noticing, I'm gonna go backwards for a minute, because I'm noticing that Rosemary Carey has said that she would like to still submit her comment about idling. So I'm just gonna go up to the top. And let me just read what she says, which is, I would like to make a comment about the fee schedule. It appears there is no fee for vehicle idling. Is this correct? If not, I would submit that we need to establish a fee for idling, which is recommended in the climate protection action plan. So we will get information about that component. And maybe, I honestly don't know if we have one or not. But we will find out, and then we can address it. Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when I was driving for the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, you know, it was understood that you could not idle for more than five minutes. You needed to turn the vehicle off and wait for your passenger, or if you were taking a break. And it was my understanding at that point, there was a state regulation that prohibited idling for more than a five-minute period.
I believe that that's true also for school buses. When they come into the schools, they cannot idle, and I believe it's posted.
Okay, so we'll get, yes, Catherine Bump is just saying that it's a mass general law. So,
Well, it'd be good to have a fine.
Yes. So I just, I just reached out to the chief. So if he provides anything else while we're in the meeting, I'll let folks know. But we'll certainly raise the issue for the next time that we look at this fee schedule and we actually vote it. Okay. Is that it for fees? Okay, wow, that seemed almost too easy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since we're in between items, there's a comment from a gentleman named John who says, "It's interesting that the means of communicating Woods Hole parking info should be spread on town Facebook page and doable electronic street sign. Why not use this for select board meeting info?" But we don't, the town itself doesn't have a Facebook page. Maybe we should someday. The police department has taken it upon themselves to develop a Facebook page. The fire department also has one that's very informative.
We do have a town website where the agenda is always posted and where the materials for the meeting can be reviewed. And I understand it's, you know, you know, it is that, it is different than a Facebook page that maybe seems easier to access. So it could be something that, that the select board thinks about in the future, but that information is there. Yes, Mr. Suso?
The other advantage of residents and those who are interested in the town website is that you can receive alerts for certain meetings and information that you require, which of course is not available on a Facebook page as well. So that seems to work pretty well for residents.
And also, as Mr. Johnson Stubb has pointed out, anyone that wants to be notified of any town meeting can go to the town's notification page and sign up for notify me at falmouthmass.us, and you'll get email alerts as to any meeting that you're interested in, whatever, waterways or beach committee or select board or any of-
You can have the minutes sent to you after the fact. And so lots of ways to get that information. And certainly, folks in town hall, if tech isn't your thing, you know, can assist you with setting that type of stuff up. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, unless it's changed, the enterprise actually has a little posting for major committee meetings in town. So there's another alert that's, you know, back to the old hard copy form.
Right.
Yep, great, thank you. Okay, next, we are going to go on to, we're a little bit behind here, so discussion update on COVID-19 issues. I think I see Scott. Here we go. Hello, Scott, welcome.
Hi, you guys hear me okay?
We can, we can see you and hear you. What do we need to know this week?
All right, I'm gonna do share screen if that's okay.
Yep, thank you.
Now, look okay to everybody?
Yes.
No, it looks good.
All right. So our case count as of four o'clock this afternoon is three twenty. The chart you see in front of you is each blue dot represents how many cases we had in a given week since the beginning. As you can see that, you know, like I had mentioned before, starting in late May all the way till roughly about now, we've been generally under ten cases per week. But you can see the last two weeks, we're at eleven and about eight, and we have eight in the last three and a half days. So that shows it's been a bit of an increase in the last week. Whether that stays or not, don't know. But so currently, our case count is at three twenty. If you remember the last few meetings, I've been giving you the colored chart, the green, gray, yellow, red chart. That chart hasn't been updated this week. They're changing it around, I think, at the state. But they've also changed the metrics for the state. If you look at the far right, you can see Falmouth, the old method for Falmouth meant we would be gray with less than five cases in a fourteen-day span. We would be green if we had less than seventeen cases. We'd be yellow at greater than seventeen, but less than thirty-five, and then greater than thirty-five, we'd be red. As of our last week, we were at nineteen. So we would actually, under the old metrics, be yellow this week for the first time. So, and a lot of the towns have been coming red and yellow. The state has changed that around, and now the new method is for us, less than ten cases in fourteen days would be gray. Forty-three or less would be green. Greater than forty-three or less than five percent positive, we would be yellow. And greater than forty-three and less than five percent positive, that's total number of tests and how many people are positive. So a high positivity rate and a high count would get you into red. So they've changed that this week. There's supposed to be an interactive chart going on the weekly updates that the state gives. Coming over to, these are just cut and paste from each of the past weekly updates from back to August on. You can see that, you know, we've been in the green, but you see this past week, we were four point four cases per hundred thousand, nineteen total. Our positivity is still under one percent, which is a very good number, but it went from point four seven to point seven eight. Now, it does fluctuate. You can see that it's gone to three and back to, up in September, you might be point three five, and we've got as high as point eight four. But, you know, we're still less than one, but it does show that we've had an increase in the last, I'd say, ten days. Our testing is still really good, and we have almost around thirteen hundred tests a week over the last couple of weeks. That's pretty robust. So there's definitely an increase. It doesn't show in the color chart because we remain green, because they basically changed the rules of what becomes yellow and green. Barnstable County is five point six, so we were doing better than Barnstable County has. They've had some issues mid-Cape with some clusters that have been developing, so they've had some mid-Cape issues. Their positivity is one point four two. Two, once you get over two, you're definitely having community spread, so you want to keep it less than that. The state has gone from eight to all the way to fifteen over the last month, three of weeks. They're now considering themselves yellow under the new metric. So, you know, there's been an increase. Countywide, what I've done here, this is all the day's cases for the county, and I put a dotted yellow line, if you can see it. You look, you can see that we're sort of in the numbers that we were in in mid-May. So we've had a nice dip in June. June was a great month. July, we had a bit of an increase right after the fourth. Dip back down in August, and now we're sort of creeping up around where we were in May. So I hope that, you know, I hope we go back down. As far as hospitalizations, they're not doing it by hospitals anymore. You used to see that in the daily update. We've got two between the two facilities here on the Cape. This is the dashboard from today. They've changed it around. There was eleven hundred cases. We've been averaging around eleven hundred cases, forty-seven thousand tests. Usually, the Sunday, Monday is a lower testing number. We've been up in the as high as eighty thousand test, daily tests up around Friday. Thirteen deaths. This chart shows where the cases are coming from. I've actually got a better chart here. I call this a rainbow chart. So if you're, if you look at the yellow and red, those are people over the age of seventy. And the light blue and the dark blue down the bottom are people under the age of thirty. And you can see early on in the left, and all the way till, you know, the last week, on the far right, you can see that the cases have shrunken down amongst the group that we wanted to shrink down statewide. And it's increased among the younger. And that's got a lot to do with testing as well. Back early on, we were only testing people that were ill. We didn't have enough tests to do everybody. And now that we're doing everybody, especially kids in schools, that's gonna have some more cases. This chart just shows cases since March, and actually, it's not really, it's accurate, but not all that accurate, because we didn't test as many people back in the May and April time. So, you know, that chart would be off, really off the deep end. I want to show you this. I took three random days. Thursday, April twenty-third, it was a total of one hundred and ninety-five thousand tests since the start. So we were six weeks into it. One hundred and ninety-five thousand tests, but on Thursday of one, in one particular day, we did eighty-six thousand. So we are definitely testing a way more people, and we're gonna find more people. So when we were doing three thousand tests positive, on a day we might have only done fifteen thousand tests or ten thousand tests, that's much, a much higher rate. So we're doing a lot more testing and we're finding more cases. Positivity for the state, I find this one interesting. I always say I keep it below two. The, our average is the dark blue. The light blue indicates college age and, you know, testing of higher education. If you take that out, we're actually doing the orange, and that number's going way up to positivity, around four percent. So there's definitely been an increase, and, you know, I'm sure you've been hearing on the news and so forth. And it's starting to hit us, and just hopefully, you know, it's just a blip and we can manage that. States change some guidance, if you haven't heard. Order fifty-three requires a closure of all specific businesses and events nightly between nine-thirty PM and five AM. No alcohol sales between nine-thirty PM and five AM. If you're a place that does both a convenience store and liquor sales, you're allowed to do, you know, you're allowed to stay open. You just can't sell alcohol after nine-thirty. Order fifty-five, this is requiring mask at all times, whether indoor or outdoor, regardless of social distancing. Okay, so that order went effective Friday. And effective Friday also is reduce some of the capacities. Groups of non-household members, at a residence of ten indoor, twenty-five outdoor, public twenty-five indoor, a hundred outdoor. And there are some exemptions to things that are already exempted. If you've already got your own guidance, there's sector-specific guidance that would apply to you as well. So that's what I have for an update. It's not the best one I've given you in terms of, you know, the outlook, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? Sam?
Yes, Scott, do you see any trends in Falmouth that might help us be better guarded?
They're, the cases that we're getting are a lot of household clusters. So, you know, if I get it, my kids get it or so forth. So there's been quite a few of that. There's been a few cases that quite frankly, don't belong, because the college-age kids should not be counting to us, but they did. There's been a couple of those. And it's just been sort of one here, one there, one here, one there. And it's not really anything in particular that tells you that's what we should be doing. Otherwise, I'd be telling you, maybe we should consider doing something different, right? But I'm not really seeing anything that would tell you that it's coming from, you know, restaurants, or it's coming from, you know, there has been some, the mid-Cape has been Bible studies and things of that nature, and we're guiding some church activities. You know, there's always a few of these cases are people that are in the medical field, you know, they're exposed and that kind of stuff. But nothing, it's just more of a quantity, not necessarily a particular thing.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Doug, yep. Yep, Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, we haven't seen any indication that having schools open has increased the rate.
Oh, I love, great question. I'll give you an example. The state of Rhode Island, I was listening to the governor a couple of weeks ago. They have about a hundred thousand kids in person. And they have about fifty thousand remote kids in the state. Of the hundred thousand kids that were remote, it was, I'm just ballparking it, because it's been, you know, it was a radio show, I was listening to the governor. About a hundred and thirty-five cases among the hundred thousand kids that are in person. Of the fifty thousand that are remote, it's been about three hundred and fifty cases. And the state of Massachusetts is finding the same thing. So they're seeing that, you know, the guidance and keeping them is better than the other things, such as the activities after school, dance, karate, whatever it happens to be, or whatever they happen to be doing, getting together as high school kid, whatever they're doing. And it's also showing here as well, the cases that we've had involving kids, their parents got it or whatever, they've all been remote at that time. You know, obviously, that, you know, it's not perfect, but it definitely shows it's actually reversed than what you might have thought of going into it. And that's a pretty good data set. That's seven weeks in Rhode Island, and that's a pretty good data set right there.
Good to hear.
Doug Brown?
So Scott, could you tell us, what is the definition of a public space? It's not just town property, not just a supermarket, it's what, anywhere the public can go, including private business?
Uh, I don't know how I would define that, to be honest with you, Doug. I mean, any public spaces could be any street corner, any neighborhood, beaches, any parking lots. It would be anything, it's a pretty broad definition.
Yeah. When I walk into a private business and the proprietor chooses not to wear a mask, I mean, there's no real effective action I can take other than not to shop there, right?
Well, no, if they've got, if they're a business, I mean, it's Megan's shoe store, you know, if she's not wearing a mask behind the counter, that's a violation. That's not, yeah, no, that's a public, that's a, that would be a public space, a business of that nature.
And just so folks know, I mean, Scott, that's, it's Scott's department that you would presumably report something like that to.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. If it was a business, a lawyer's office, or a
Hey now.
Or a civil engineer's office, or something of that nature, or whatever.
Builders, contractors.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a place that you're open to the, you know, you go into, yeah, the idea would, you know, I guess you'd be splitting hairs with somebody who might, you know, run a business out of their house, and you happen to come over, you know, and that's my different.
Any other questions for Scott? I mean, obviously, you know, the governor and, you know, his health experts at the state level are seeing enough that they are concerned to really rein things in, because I think this, these new orders took people, you know, who haven't been maybe watching as closely as obviously you do, took people by surprise. Because we had really loosened up to a place that I think, you know, mostly day-to-day, folks could kind of do what they would normally do, and this really, you know, feels like it's kind of pulling it back in.
And the golden rule is anything over two percent positivity, you've got spread. You know, it starts to grow really fast once it gets over two percent. And that's where we're at. So.
Any other questions for, yep, Doug Jones?
Order fifty-five doesn't have a fine associated with it?
Yeah.
And is that put out by, who is that a fine assessed by?
Who's gonna do the fine? It could be, it could be the health department, it could be the police.
And how would you interpret fifty-five if you're walking down the street near, near anybody else? You know, there's no one else on the sidewalk. I guess I interpret that saying you need to wear a mask. It seems a little extreme.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, if two people are on the beach and it's, you know, between Black Beach and you're at Chappy Beach, and how far apart they are, yes, you still would, I mean, they didn't really define it. So you could take, you're out walking your, Doug, if you get done with a meeting and I get done with a meeting and you and I are walking, you know, I'm walking a dog in Wild Street, and I'm, yeah, you would be quite aware of the mask. That's the requirement. I mean, enforcement's gonna be something that I just can't be, I mean, I've gotten some calls today about going through neighborhoods to look for that kind of stuff, and it's not really practical, but, you know, it is required.
Yep. Okay, any other questions for Scott?
I got an interesting question for you, Scott. Have you been pushed to the limit of having to issue any fines to any businesses that are failing to comply?
Oh, yeah, we've issued fine.
Okay.
Yeah, well, how we do it is, at the beginning, we notify them, let them know. The, we do it in writing the second time, third time, we do a three-hundred-dollar fine. I don't like to do it initially the first time off, but, you know, the warning, that's how we just stated, done it, has asked us to do it at the beginning. We've kind of kept it that way. We find places multiple times, same place.
Interesting, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions for Scott?
Madam Chair, I have, I'm just wondering, later on, two spots down on our agenda is the discussion of a town meeting. And I didn't know whether the board might have any questions of Scott while he's with us. And I didn't know whether the board might have any questions of Scott while he's with us regarding, um, town meeting, which convenes a week from tonight.
Yes, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Suso, because that's helpful and that way Scott can, can go and go to bed. Uh, Scott, what is just your thought where we stand now when we're seeing some of these higher numbers and how you saw town meeting? You know, care, get carried out, um, earlier in September. What, what's your thought and, and are we sort of, do we have the, you know, right sort of protections in place?
Well, I'm going to give you two scenarios. First off, we are still green. The increase isn't, you know, we're not, we didn't go off the deep end, right? So you saw the chart was still right around ten, you know? So I would say we're still relatively in the same boat. And the second, I'd give you that same analogy that when Sam asked me, you know, about schools, right? We know that if we follow the procedures and the social distancing in schools, the cases are actually lower than the, when they're in the general population. And I think you can take that same rules because you're basically applying those same similar rules even more separation than you would see in a school. And, and I think that, that is a reasonable way of looking at it. So, you know, in a controlled environment, it's relatively safe, uh, very, quite safe actually, in a controlled environment. So I think we're still, we're still doing okay. Now, if I got thirty-two cases between now and next, and Friday, I'll let Mr. Vier and Julian, you guys know. But, I mean, if it trickles and it's sort of, you know, staying where we're, you know, sort of staying the course, I think we stay the course.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Scott. Really appreciate, um, uh, you know, the visuals are really helpful, I think, to give us a sense of what's going on.
Very comprehensive, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, good night.
Take the rest of the day off.
And thanks to all the citizens, thanks to all the citizens that are doing the right thing.
Yeah, and we, we know it's hard. Um, okay, we are going to, um, have a follow-up presentation, discussion, vote, Mayflower Wind temporary right to entry agreement for five sixty-five Blacksmith Shop Road, zero Surf Drive and zero Grand Avenue. And letter agreement regarding reimbursement for consultant costs. So, um, Mr. Suso, how, how do we want to go forward with, um, did you want to make some statements and then?
Certainly, um,
I think we're going to see a presentation, yep.
Yeah, certainly, thank you. It's Boards Aware. You, uh, have had a, a couple of presentations on your past agendas from representatives of Mayflower Wind. And, uh, a number of questions have arisen, uh, specifically before you tonight. Is a request for a right of entry or a right to entry, uh, at three different locations in town in order for Mayflower Wind to determine whether it would be appropriate to come back to this board and request, uh, some permanent circumstance. The right to entry is only temporary and at most would allow them to explore possibilities. At the same time, uh, as the Boards Aware questions have arisen regarding some, the concerns on the part of some that, uh, even the right to entry could, uh, be preceded with some, uh, information and, uh, broader discussion of, uh, environmental-related concerns. And the board has received a PowerPoint, uh, from Mayflower Wind as well as information, an informational narrative on, um, electromagnetic, uh, uh, information and concerns which arose recently. And, uh, they are, they have returned in order to answer those questions in advance of consideration of the potential right to entry. And I also want to note, uh, Madam Chair, that I have also brought to the board, uh, I had inquired of Mayflower Wind as to whether they would be willing to, um, reimburse the town for the services of a qualified consultant to be engaged by the town on behalf of the select board to answer, uh, any environmental or related questions throughout this entire process. And the Mayflower Wind representatives have agreed to do so. If the board is so inclined, they're, uh, one of the items on your agenda is authorizing this agreement to go forward. So, Mayflower Wind has several representatives here, Madam Chair, if you'd like them to proceed with a PowerPoint presentation and answer the board's questions as well.
Great, right before we do that, I see a question from Sam. Thank you, Mr. Suso.
If, if, if we're going to have, uh, somebody coming in to kind of testify as an analysis, can we not combine that with somebody to actually do after the build testing? Part of my career, I actually supervised the building of a screen room that was designed to make sure that no electromagnetic radiation from radio frequencies ever escaped the room because it was for classified information and it was being processed in the room. And I know that when they built that screen room, because I was the manager of that project, that we brought somebody in there and they literally went around the outside of the room and measured the amount of radiation that was being emitted to make sure that nothing was coming out of any significance. You know, it was basically a metal-lined room set. And then the seals on the doors were special seals and what have you. And it, my physics background, the only exposure that's likely to happen is where there are manhole covers that don't quite fit well enough because everything else appears to be shielded. And that's a question that I have, that needs to be verified. But we can also have a testing company come in and check to see what those electromagnetic radiation levels are as a special safeguard.
Madam Chair, we could certainly ask that that be part of the process, uh, subject to, um, an agreement with Mayflower Wind if they so concur. And should I, I'd also like to ask that Frank Duffy be brought into our conversation. Frank is in the waiting room.
Great. Frank, we'll have Frank come on in. Okay. So why don't we start with, welcome Frank. Why don't we start by, um, seeing the presentation that Mayflower has? And then we'll open the floor up for conversations and weigh in from town council.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, thank you. It's good to see you all again. Seth Kaplan, uh, Director of External Affairs for Mayflower Wind. And I was going to ask if I should do this green share, but you guys are doing it, that's great. Um, I'd like to, uh, note that with us today, uh, conceptually, I also have Daniel Hubbard, uh, Mayflower's General Counsel. Tim Ryer is a project engineer for Mayflower Wind. And, uh, special guest, Dr. Peter Volberg of Gradient, who's the EMF expert, uh, who, uh, with the firm that did, uh, the analysis that we provided to you and is available tonight to answer questions. Um, we just wanted to, first of all, say that we're really glad to have this chance to reintroduce ourselves. One of the comments that we heard, um, was that there's been turnover on the board since we had previously, uh, done a general overview. So it's good to kind of take a step back and cover that. I mean, basically, we're looking at beginning a relationship that will last for decades. And this is the beginning of a process. And we don't want to leap into anything, um, in any way that will, uh, not sit well with the town. We were, our mention, our mission, as was described so well by, uh, earlier, is to, was to respond to concerns and to offer the agreement about the consultant, which we've done. And, uh, I was very happy to hear, uh, Mr. Brown's comments earlier today, that, uh, general satisfaction with the, uh, with the, uh, information that we provided. Um, and we look forward to continuing the dialogue and responding to all of the concerns and the questions from the town. So if we move on to the next slide, um, the, uh, just the, the absolute basics is that, uh, Mayflower Wind is a joint venture between Shell New Energies and a Ocean Winds. Uh, Ocean Winds is itself a collaboration between two large renewable energy companies, EDP Renewables and NG. And the, uh, we, we really tried to make an effort to combine the best of the companies and reach out, uh, to, and, and create something unique and special. Both companies have a tradition of investing in local communities. Uh, you know, I come, the company that I come for, the renewable energy that I, the company that I come from has a long tradition of partnerships with the towns where we locate our onshore wind farms. Shell has a long tradition of, uh, investing in the communities for down on the Gulf of Mexico and some places where they've been present for, you know, coming on a century. Um, and both companies have strong, uh, safety cultures that we really want to bring to bear here. Uh, and, uh, the other thing that we really view as a key val, as a core value is focusing on innovation and advancing the state of the art in terms of technology. And, uh, you know, which is very consistent with a community that has as many scientific and research institutions as Falmouth. And just in terms of the specifics of investing in a community, uh, one thing I'll mention later on is that our Eelgrass survey, the initial survey that we did, um, off of the Falmouth Lake Beach was done by CR Environmental, uh, a, uh, a, a company based right in Falmouth. And our primary environmental contractor, AECOM, um, is there, our, our work with them is run out of their office nearby Pecasa. Uh, you know, as you know, you throw a rock real hard from there, you, you hit, uh, Falmouth. So moving on to the next slide. Just the, uh, the, 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 uh, actual wind farm will be, uh, thirty miles south of Martha's Vineyard, twenty miles south of Nantucket, well over the horizon. Um, the, uh, power from those turbines will be exported through underground cables, uh, running under, obviously under the water, underground. Um, and to, um, say for the first time, a theme that I will say several times, the cables would continue underground under the beach. Um, and then surfacing, uh, uh, in, uh, a bit inland. They, that is done through the use of, uh, horizontal directional drilling, which is a technique that is well-known in Falmouth. It is how the cables were lent, brought in from the vineyard. Uh, it is how the town connected the, uh, relatively new, uh, water treatment facility to Long Pond, uh, off Gifford Road. Uh, and, uh, that HDD technique is a proven and good way to be able to bring things from the water onto land without disturbing the sensitive coastal interface, uh, uh, in this case, the beach. The, uh, substation, uh, which we have not yet determined what the site of the substation will be. However, definitively, we can say it's not going to be right on the beach. It's not going to be in one of the beach neighborhoods. Uh, it will be in an appropriate location further inland. But, uh, that, that is, uh, something that we are working on. And we need to better categorize the potential sites for that and determine final location for that. But the substation will be needed, but it will again be much further inland. It will not be in, uh, the neighborhood right by the landing point. Um, moving it on to the next slide. Uh, I mean, and this is the big context here, this is a clean energy project. The Commonwealth recently did a car, a pathways report where they looked at what was necessary to meet the state's climate goals. One thing they determined is we're going to need a lot of solar power. And Falmouth has, uh, taken great steps in fostering that. But they also noted that within, uh, very few years, we're going to have to be building between one and two gigawatts of offshore wind, uh, you know, every single year. Uh, you know, so that, that's roughly, that's, you know, roughly the size of what we're planning on building. Uh, and, uh, you know, and so this is the beginning of a major movement to be able to meet our goals of decarbonization, uh, that, that, uh, that Falmouth has endorsed. And it's an opportunity for Falmouth to be a part of reaching that important goal, uh, working with these turbines that would be so far offshore. Would note that we were successful at Mayflower in, um, entering into purchase power agreements with the Massachusetts Utilities, uh, which were approved by the Department of Public Utilities last week. Yeah, it's been an exciting time for a lot of us in a lot of ways, right? And, uh, the, that will produce enough power to power roughly a half a million homes and businesses in Massachusetts. The power that is being purchased under those contracts for eight hundred and four megawatts to, but, uh, give a little bit of frame of reference to my earlier mention of a gigawatt, uh, which is a thousand megawatt. Um, the analysis by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources is compared with what they expect the cost of power to be in the future, that these contracts will save the customers of Massachusetts over two billion dollars over the life of the project. So in terms of wind, wind territory, in terms of clean power that saves money for everybody in the Commonwealth. Moving on, right, schedule here, direct benefits to Falmouth and Cape Cod, which responds to, uh, the question that was asked the last time, what's in it for us? Um, which was directly asked. Um, you know, the, the, there's, they're going to be the jobs. Um, again, I would highlight that we've started to do that by use of CR for, uh, doing those offshore surveys. You know, uh, the, you know, there's going to be, there will be local job creation, um, uh, especially for the onshore components. We would commit that we will work closely with the neighborhoods and the town as, uh, in its official capacity to minimize impacts on road use, traffic, other areas. Uh, in terms of our construction plans are tailored. We know we're going to not be able to do a lot that we able, let me put it, let me flip that over. We will be, we will not be able to do very much at all during the height of the summer season. Uh, I know what, uh, the streets of Falmouth look like in the heights of the summer season. But we will work, we know that the folks of Falmouth treasure the use of their beaches and the, during the off-season especially, when it is not so clogged up with visitors and people on their way to the, uh, to, uh, to the vineyard. And we will, uh, make sure that our traffic management is well-coordinated with the neighborhood associations and with the town. And then, you know, the, uh, kind of the elephant in the room is the need to enter into a host community agreement. Uh, that is something that we need to work out with the town. And that, again, you know, when I talk about the need to start a relationship that will last for decades, that will be, uh, a key part in beginning that relationship. And I mean, that's, that, that's what's been a little, uh, it's important to note, we are not talking about beginning the relationship yet. We're sort of waving to each other from across the street in expectation of hopefully entering into a relationship. The monies that the town will receive over time can be, will be used for whatever the town decides to use them for. Perhaps state the obvious, uh, you know, just looking at the documents that the town has prepared in the past and discussions. You all know it far better than I do, but the, you know, coastal resiliency, energy efficiency, whatever. It, it is, it is going to be for the town to decide what, uh, to make use of, of any funds that are received. Uh, moving on, next slide. We also have, um, and this was part of our proposal that was, uh, that resulted in our receiving the contract to sell the power to the utilities. Um, have made commitments to put money into Mass Clean Energy Center for various programs. I would notice, note that that includes ten million dollars for development of innovative technologies. It would be surprising if, and those are administered through grants by Mass CEC through RFPs and competitive processes and objective calls. It's not us just writing checks. It's a, uh, a, a process where the best institutions compete to win those, will compete to win those funds through a mass CEC process. However, it would of course be surprising if none of that money wound up in Woods Hole at, uh, one of the fine institutions down there, um, supporting STEM, uh, and supporting, uh, technology innovation. I would also note that we have committed, uh, uh, since the state wanted there to be assistance to low-income communities, five million dollars to the Cape Light Compact, of which of course Falmouth is a part. Cape Light Compact has moved, is moving forward with they refer to as a strategic electrification plan, uh, that where a ratepayer money will be paying for a big component of that, that is electric, uh, high-efficiency electric heating and cooling, uh, demand response to, to reduce demand at peak times, uh, solar panels and houses, a little bit of storage. And there is a bit of a gap in that program to, uh, make sure that low-income households can participate without cost. And we have, uh, we have stepped forward as part of our proposal, uh, that was accepted to help fill that gap. Moving on to the next slide.
If we could, I could ask one question before you go to the next slide. Could you just touch on the, uh, the thirty-five million dollars for, uh, ports and infrastructure and how that might be applied?
That is, um, something that is in, as part of our agreement with the Mass Clean Energy Center. So they will play a key role, that state, that quasi-public state authority in determining how that money is, uh, spent. And, uh, you know, so that's down the line.
Okay.
Uh, the permitting process, we have initiated the permitting process. We are in close discussions with the federal agencies and the state agencies. Uh, you know, the federal will, the, the federal process may see some change in the near future. As everything at the federal level may see some change in the near future. I would just simply note that all of these timelines, all of these federal and state processes have ample opportunity for public participation. And, uh, you know, our, our intention is to enter into a host community agreement with Falmouth and work cooperatively and help the, and work with the town and, and and help, and work with the town in, in a partnership as we enter into particularly the state permitting. You know, we really want to enter the state permitting in partnership with Falmouth and, and make sure that any concerns that the state, that they, that Falmouth has are addressed going into that process and that it's not a situation where there has to be any, some sort of adversarial process between Mayflower and the town in that state process. But again, the state process does provide for ample opportunity. I would note that of course, abutter notifications will be made in full compliance with the town's requirements and the requirements of state law. No final decisions, nothing like any final decisions have been made about routing or citing. So therefore, it would be impossible to give a butter notifications now because we simply don't know who the abutters are. I mean, it, it might seem like an elementary point, but you can't notify the abutters if you don't know who they are. And we need a different, more data and we need more analysis and design to determine citing and routing. And then, once it is determined, then we can know who the likely abutters are and we can notify them and we will do so. Moving on. Onshore routing. So what we can do in terms of onshore routing is have strong principles. And then you can watch and make sure that we stick to these principles. We will utilize previously disturbed areas. We will, you know, try as best, we will focus on avoiding anything that is, you know, undisturbed, avoiding wetlands, floodplains, endangered species, cultural historic resources as much as possible. And just that these are guiding principles. We can, by following existing roads, we can minimize impact. We will maintain distance from adjacent properties as much as possible. Seek to use natural existing vegetation as a noise and visual barriers as much as possible. And quite honestly, by maximizing the efficiency of the cable length, by trying to draw straight lines as much as possible, we can avoid stepping on people's property. And then, moving on to the next, to the next slide. So the, these are potential landfall sites. There was just a question that came in from the chat on what do I mean by not, by a bit inland? I can say that none of the substation sites are on this map. Okay? That it's, you know, so, you know, if you pick, if you look, there's Morse Pond. You know, and, you know, that, some, you know, that the, all of the sites that we're looking at a substation are north of that. Obviously, I, I can't say where the substation will be because we haven't determined it yet. And we are looking at multiple sites for that. But the landfalls that we are studying are identified here. And we've simply drawn some lines on a map. They are preliminary, they are indicative, they are what we are thinking of. And they are, quite frankly, try to draw as straight lines as possible to, you know, minimize how much cable we have to put down and to minimize disruption during the construction process by drawing straight lines. But again, these are preliminary, these are indicative, these are what we are thinking of. And they will be refined in the design process and in consultation with the town and during the permitting process. Move on to the next slide, please. The, we, we, this gets us into the business of doing the surveys for the landfalls. The under, the underwater part was already done with permission by the town in close consultation with the beach department. And that, then, as I've mentioned before, was done by CR, right, right out of Falmouth. And then, the photo of the onland part is a photo of the geotechnical boring of the same type of boring done, yeah, done and passed by, back in 2010 by Eversource and Comcast, when they put the hybrid cable that carries both electricity and cable TV out to the vineyard. So it's just, just like that. It's a very standard kind of rig that one might see in any number of construction sites in order to just get a sample of what the dirt is like. All that we're looking for in terms of the landfalls is the ability to do that sort of sampling. You know, the rig rolls up, it takes a sample. It's done, that's it. Moving on to the, the next slide. We are gathering data from a number of sources. We will share this data with the town. We think it's actually going to be fairly valuable to them. This is actually pretty cool. This is LightR from, you know, just simply from light observation. That, and that's the Falmouth Heights Beach. We think that this data could actually be very valuable to the town in terms of coastal resiliency planning. And, you know, and we, we are eager to share our data with the town and provide benefit and be a good neighbor in that way. Next slide, please. And again, reiterating that the landfall by HDD coming in under the beach, this is just a little bit more of an illustration of that, showing how it just simply comes, it, it, it gets put underground out in the water. And in this case, actually, it's the thing that's not quite accurate is the cable would already be underground. And then it comes up, well, it comes up inland. And then on the next slide, using the Mill Roads, I mean, actually, I'm sorry, this is the Surf Drive one, that, that, that Comcast-Eversource hybrid cable comes along. Basically, on the right, you can see that's that gravel parking lot on Mill Road. It was a gravel parking lot in, you know, early 2010. After Eversource and Comcast crew came in, it was again a gravel parking lot, in this case with a manhole cover. That's the difference. After all is said and done, after a cable like this is installed, the only difference is there's a manhole cover. That's it. So it, it doesn't disturb the beach. It doesn't even disturb whether it can be done in a parking lot, it can be done in a grassy area, it can be done in a, in a gravel parking lot. And what remains is an access port, basically. There's another one of these on Surf, on, further down Surf Drive, the older cable, where it's actually in the street. So that's, you know, that, and, and of course, of course, if we disturb any roads, we will repave them to the satisfaction of the town.
The cable goes fifty feet below the beach. How far off, offshore does it come up?
Oh, offshore? So you have to remember that it is coming in all the way from the wind farm underground. However, a, the HDD rig is, and Tim may know that, Tim, how far off the shore would the HDD rig be?
Hi, yeah, so we're looking at specific distances as we, as we continue our environmental surveys and our offshore geophysical surveys, but approximately 3,000 feet from the beach. Just, just to make sure we get far back enough from the, you know, the sensitive nearshore resources, eelgrass beds and everything like that, and that we're able to avoid under them. But about, about 3,000 feet back from the beach.
Well clear of the, of clams or eelgrass or anything like that. Okay, next slide, please. So, you know, I've mentioned this before, that both come, that all of our parent companies have very strong health and safety requirements. You know, quite honestly, even if, you know, even if you all were, even if there was an in-person option for this meeting, we wouldn't be allowed to be down there. That, you know, the, that right now we are, you know, and this is actually, I mean, you know, COVID has been tough for everybody. But, you know, the inability to do any kind of public meetings or outreach has been hindered, not just by COVID and not just by the state requirements, but by the fact that our corporate parents are especially vigilant and have instituted general travel bans that have made it extremely difficult for us to be able to come down there. And, but, you know, it's the right thing to do and we will do that. I mean, one thing that I would just note is that is the, the safety cultures, I think one of the things that I think is most notable that we're talking about, safety cultures, where basically everybody involved with all the projects have the ability to stop the line. That if somebody sees an unsafe condition, they can't, they have the authority to report it and bring things to a halt. Moving to the next slide. Now, I'm not going to say very much about EMF. You know, I, I was a, you know, I have a law degree, although I am retired from the active practice of law, unlike your fearless chair. And, you know, I, I am not an electrical engineer at all. But we do have Dr. Peter Volberg on to answer questions about it. I would just note, if you go to the next slide, that as is spelled out in the paper from Gradient, from the Dr. Volberg's firm, that there is a health-based guideline for exposure, which has been referenced. That's the standard that has been referenced by people expressing concern about this issue. And that everything that we, we are looking at doing would be well, well below that level. As, as Mr. Patterson referred to earlier, the larger, the place of concern would be, you know, if you're sitting on the, the manhole. And, you know, that, and there is reference to that here. You know, that, that it's, it's, and, and I think you may have a colloquy with Dr. Volberg in a moment about electric versus magnetic fields. But let's not anticipate, let's not anticipate that.
Can I just ask you a quick question? Because I think we may have a discrepancy in our minutes. Will these cables be shielded with some kind of conductive cage or conduit?
Dr. Volberg, can you very quickly mention the role of shielding in terms of electric fields as opposed to magnetic fields?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
One of the things that characterizes this project, particularly what we're looking at right here, is that, you know, the, the lines are underground and yes, the cables are shielded. And so the electric fields produced by the individual phase conductors do not leave the vaults at all. They're completely shielded by the, the, first of all, by the shielding around the wires. And then secondly, by the underground location. And so maybe that answers your question or should I continue?
It does for me because I know what a Faraday cage is. But most people probably don't. And that's the fact that whenever you put any kind of a current inside of a conducting shield, if you will, then none of those fields escape that conducting shield.
Yeah, I mean, I should have included a video, I guess, of the Theater of Electricity at the Boston Museum of Science, which is where I
Yeah, that's a good example.
And see the Faraday cage there. So, moving on to the, the next slide. You know, we will comply with noise requirements, of course. You know, there's two different kinds of noise requirements that need to be thought about. One is during construction period and one is in operation down the line. You know, we, there is, you know, there, there are strict state standards for noise from construction equipment that we will completely comply with. And, you know, we will have a complete noise mitigation program in terms of, apropos of the early discussion, minimizing vehicle idling times, neighborhood notification plans, a 24-hour phone line to be able to receive any, any input responses. And of course, during operation, the cables will not produce any noticeable noise as they will sit buried under the ground. Moving on to the next slide. The, now, we have, you know, the, the other access agreement that we're looking for here is to go into the yard waste and composting site, which is one of our potential substation sites. Basically, all that we're looking to do there is send in a few people wearing, you know, bright orange vests, take some pictures, tromp around a little bit and put down some measuring equipment, as shown in the lower right-hand corner of the slide, to be able to measure current ambient background noise. That, and one of the things we will need to do is model the noise, which we cannot do until we have designed the facility, the, the substation, and we know where it is. You know, since, you know, as anybody who has spent time down on Jones Road, you know, or up around, we're right by the courthouse where there is a current Eversource substation. You know, or the other end of that substation is opposite the Atria Retirement Facility there on Gifford Street or the, or the even larger substation up in Hatchville. They do make some noise. Electrical infrastructure does make some sound, a hum, basically. And we would need to make sure that we are, that, that we are in compliance with the, with the, with the regulations regarding that. And in order to do that, we need background, need to have information on what the current background sounds are. And so that's, we're just seeking access to be able to plot the little box down with the antenna and the solar panel, the battery to just sit there and have it listen to, to the site. That's what that boils down to.
Mr. Kaplan, if we can just stop for one second, I don't want to have too many of the comments generate, but maybe if we can, I just, let me just ask you, how many more slides do you have?
We're just about done here.
Okay, so we'll finish up and then we'll go through the list of comments that folks have
Yeah, as a matter of fact, there is one more slide.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so, and then, next slide, please. The, and this just simply summarizes what I just said, that we are simply seeking these permits for just simple access. As the town manager aptly noted, these are temporary. They are, do not commit the town to any further commitment to pursue the project. And simply allow us to be able to gather information so we can continue with the design and permitting process. That's it. And I would also note that we, at the request of the town, as was noted, have provided a, an agreement to be able to reimburse the town for the cost of Sultan's routine, to assist the town in its review. The next slide is just simply contact information.
Great. Thank you. So let me just read through, because you can then direct to, to whom the question should, should go. We have a couple of them. You started to answer one from Debbie Scott, but the, but the last part, I don't think we got to, which is, at what point are EMF radiations highest?
Dr. Volberg?
Yes, well, the, the, that, that's a very interesting question because in, in fact, that's one of the characteristics of the electric and magnetic fields from transmission lines and from underground lines in particular, is that the fields drop off dramatically with distance. And so therefore, if you want to know where the location of the highest field is, and that would be essentially directly over any kind of underground transmission lines. Or if you're on a, let's say, a utility right-of-way where there are overhead lines, then the highest fields are directly under those lines.
Okay. And we had another question from MH2020. Are people sitting in the parking lot? I think this was in reference to the idea of the manhole in, say, Mill, Mill, on Mill Road. Are people sitting in the parking lot getting exposure to magnetic fields? Are they adding magnetic exposure to our residents and children? What is the limitation number and what would these emit?
Well, as we mentioned earlier, that the, the fields are lower than the guidance standard that has been developed internationally for protection of public health. And so there, we're not, we're not going to be anywhere close to that number. And in fact, because these fields drop off so dramatically with distance, that, you know, if you're in a, let's say, random location in the parking lot, it's probably true that you can't even detect the presence of the underground lines. You would have to move over and essentially be standing on top of the underground route if you were to try to use a measuring instrument to determine what the fields were.
Okay, and I think that person is following up by saying, but more than we have now. I guess that would depend on where you are in town, if you're under some other utility or something, correct?
Exactly, because I mean, i- i- in our homes, we use the same type of electricity for our appliances, for our heating and for fans and so forth. And everywhere you use 60-cycle electricity, you're going to have these 60-cycle magnetic fields. And it's something that we've used for a long time. I mean, we've had that, if some of you may have seen the recent shows about the contest between Thomas Edison and George Westinghouse, where Thomas Edison started out with DC power. But then it was found that the AC power that George Westinghouse was proposing was much more efficient and could be transported, made the electricity transportable over longer distances because you could move the voltage up and down. Anyway, we now have, we have, for over a hundred years, have had 60-cycle electric power. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has many utility right-of-ways that carry this power back and forth. And the places where the electric and magnetic fields exist are, you know, in those right-of-ways, but also in our homes.
Okay. And let me just follow up. We have one from another individual that says, what about therm- let me just follow up. We have one from another individual that says, what about thermal radiation at beach or underground?
I think Tim maybe will talk, I mean, the only thing I can say as a layperson, having been in the Mill Road parking lot in the wintertime, judging by the snow that was on the manhole. I, you know, can my raw lay amateur judgment, but tell you that it wasn't producing any heat, or at least discernible heat. Tim, can you, is that something you can address about whether we anticipate thermal radiation, which I suppose is just a fancy name for heat coming off of the underground lines?
Yeah, thanks, Seth. I don't know if, I don't know if you can see me now. Yeah, and perhaps Dr. Valberg can
We can, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll just keep speaking then. So perhaps Dr. Valberg can weigh in as well if he has any thoughts on this. But, you know, from the assessments we've done so far, we don't expect any noticeable thermal impacts on, you know, say, a parking lot or beach location, you know, hotter temperatures above the cables or anything like that. At the distances we're looking at here, right? So I mean, you're thinking about, let's say, under the beach location at, you know, the Worcester Ave location that we that we looked at, approximately eight meters, at least below the beach. So the thermal radiation similar to the similar to the magnetic field dissipates with distance. Wouldn't expect a significant difference in temperature above those locations.
Okay. And forgive me if some of this is repetitive, but I just want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to get some of this information. So going back to the idea of the magnetic exposure, there was a follow-up asking, would it be more than we have now at that location? Will they be adding more? If so, so it will be more than before they start?
If you're looking at a location where there's nothing, there's no utility structure of any kind, then yes, it will be more than the the nothing that was there before. But I think when you were, if you were to compare it, for example, to the magnetic fields that you get particularly from motorized appliances, because if you think about it, the energy in a motor, I mean, the the way that the motor turns is essentially because magnetic fields repel each other, and that causes the rotor to turn relative to the stator. And those magnetic fields are quite strong. And so if you were in a house that was typically using electricity, I don't think you would, you would see any effect from these, even if they were quite nearby.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go back there, we'll go back to the board, the question for the select board. I'll just ask this of folks while we have them. Does EMF have impact on medical devices such as pacemakers or defibrillators? And does magnetic exposure lead to increased risk of childhood cancer? So adding this magnetic exposure would make that area more likely to cause childhood hurt, excuse me, childhood cancer, as studies say? Those are two separate comments. They're just screening together.
Okay, and I can, you know, help address those. I think the the issue of what biological or health effects of powerline magnetic fields could cause have been very thoroughly addressed. I mean, I think that there were a lot of studies that were begun in the late 70s and the early 80s. There was a whole program that was funded by the Congress to look for potential effects. The bottom line of all of those was that they really didn't find any potential effects. And I think I can provide links to various health authorities, like the World Health Organization, Health Canada, the the Health Authority of the UK and so forth, where they have looked at all of the literature and said, well, we don't really see that there are any effects that are below the level that has been determined by the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection.
And and of course, at the request of the board, we did prepare, we'd had, we had gradient prepare. We did not prepare. We had gradient prepare a memo on this that is in your packet. So which references the study, many of the studies that Dr. Valberg was referring to. And in there, of course, is also his credentials and those of his colleagues.
Great, thank you. And can you just speak about the pacemakers, defibrillators?
No, that is an interesting question, and I'm glad you asked that because that same question would come up, in fact, i- in a very interesting way for people who work, you know, let's say, in generating stations or in power plants and so forth, because there are higher magnetic fields there as well. And so again, there are guidelines that say that those those pacemakers, you know, can be affected by very high fields, but not of the kinds of the size fields that we're talking about here. You have to remember that these are not fields that radiate. These are fields that are so low in frequency, 60 cycles per second, that they're far different from what you might think of as your cell phone emitting or a television or radio antenna emitting.
Okay, thank you. And I think there's some other, some studies or something that somebody's posting, and I guess there's just sort of a rhetorical question for this board, where someone's saying, my kids live here. I'm unsure of where these guys live. Can these guys be 100% sure putting this in our beach will not increase potential childhood cancer at all? If they can't, why would the board allow this? So just a comment for the board. This is sort of our new way of having to operate where generally, obviously, if we were having this, we'd have people coming up and and making a comment at the lectern. And we don't quite have it that way. So I want to make sure that we continue to do our due diligence to have that public input. Anything from this board in terms of questions for our guests this evening? Yes, Doug and Nancy, did I see your hand? Okay, Doug Brown, go ahead.
Okay, so I want to thank you guys for the detailed information in the packet. It was very good. It didn't get to every single question. And so one I have is I heard a lot of references about the underground cables and the shielding. But when you get to the land and where the manhole cover is, at that point, you're going to go overhead. Is that correct?
The underground cables will continue to a substation. At the substation, it will transform to a different voltage and go to the overhead, to overhead lines. I mean, folks on the Cape are very conversant with overhead lines. I mean, there's a corridor that runs up north from that substation on Jones Road, right up to Joint Base Cape Cod. And then actually, along the way, there's a merger right around Hatchville where another set of lines is coming in from the east. Yeah, and again, I just want to be completely candid that the design of the overhead lines, the locations of the overhead lines is an ongoing process. The regional system operator, ISO New England, has to be involved. EverSource, as the federally regulated transmission utility, has to be involved. You know, so we are not completely masters of our own destiny in terms of the precise placement and nature of those overhead lines. It is an ongoing process. We look forward as we are gaining more information about the nature and type and location of those overhead lines of working extremely closely with the town and in partnership to make sure that, you know, we are addressing any concerns about them whatsoever. But, you know, just, you know, it's, you know, I really wish, I mean, my life, the life of my colleagues would be so much easier if I could throw up on the screen a perfect map of what we're actually going to build. But it simply doesn't exist yet. And and one of the big moving pieces is going to be those overhead lines. And so I could just simply commit to you to work in good faith with the town as we get a greater understanding of where those will be and 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 work with you all on that.
Well, you completely answered my question in the first sentence, so don't feel like you have to expand anymore. I have a second question, if I could, which is, what drives the choice of the Falmouth Heights location versus the other two? The reason I ask that is many of the comments from the public against this are from that area of town where for two reasons, the primary is the health concerns. I think you've addressed that pretty well in your report, and the public can read that. And I found it easy to understand, so I think they will probably find it easy to understand as well. The second one is the, a lot of people in the area in the Heights are concerned that we just finished improving that whole area. We've got these beautiful curbs and all this nice work, and it seems a shame to disturb it now. And I'm just wondering if you feel it's an advantage to be on the higher ground there? Or if there's some other reason? Just want to know why it's being considered versus the other two. You could.
Well, I mean, for one thing, I mean, higher ground is, of course, an advantage in terms of, as you all know, in terms of coastal resiliency, in terms of likelihood of staying dry in the event of sea level rise. Another factor is just simply drawing a straight line from the, from the, from a landing point up to where we'll have to connect with the larger electrical system that minimizes disruption. And in terms of that very legitimate second concern about not disturbing that treasured park in the, in the middle of Worcester was, you'll have to forgive me that I am not perfectly expert on which part is Worcester Avenue and which is Worcester Port. But the park in the middle of, I believe that's Worcester Avenue down by the beach. You know, a lot of time and effort has gone into making that beautiful. I understand that. The thing I can commit to you is that when we are done, it'll be better than when we first touch it in terms of being able to restore, you know, and, you know, make the effort to be able to make some improvements to the area. You know, you know, it, it, that's, you know, we, we have no intention of leaving anything worse off than we find it. Site restoration is a critical part of construction. And we will, and and, you know, we've been, we reaching out to the Maravista Falmouth Heights Neighborhood Association, look forward to talking to them directly. We want to make sure that if that is our site, which it may or may not be, that we work with them to make sure that they are satisfied and happy with our site restoration plans. And if it's another site, one of the other ones I flagged, the same will be true of those neighborhoods as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm just going to return to the chat for a moment because we do have some other questions. We someone is making a statement that scientific studies have not clearly shown whether exposure to EMF increases cancer risk. I think that you've addressed that, Dr. Valberg, that can you just speak once more to the issue of connection between between this and cancer? And they're specifically asking about can, will this, can you guarantee this does not cause cancer in our kids?
Sure, no, I'd be glad to. The, a lot of the research that started back in the early 80s and so forth was in fact stimulated by the idea that somebody had that, you know, perhaps they could, you know, perhaps these fields could be linked to some increase in cancer. However, those early studies then triggered a lot of subsequent research. And that's why I'm encouraging people to look, you know, not at the internet generally, but really look at kind of legitimate public health sites, such as the World Health Organization or ICNERF or Public Health England and so forth. Because those have been reviewed time and time again by authorities and scientists who know how those studies are carried out. And that's how the present standard was derived. And I think that it's a standard that is protective. And I think that, you know, I feel confident that the kind of concern that people are expressing is is not going to be warranted. And I think part of the reason that I mentioned earlier was that we've been using this type of electric power for, you know, many, many decades. And the public health statistics that have followed the United States population and populations around the world have not shown any correlation with an increasing risk of a disease that correlates with our increasing use of electricity.
Great. And and just to follow up on that, any, can you just speak to any connection between EMF and nervous system disease that a resident might be living with? And I know we're getting a little bit specific and, but I just want to make sure that we we communicate these questions.
No, yes, thank you. And I think here again, we can, I would just reference people to things like the World Health Organization analysis. I mean, they have essentially looked at that literature, not only for cancer, but for other kinds of potential health effects that people may be concerned about, such as nervous system effects and so on. And again, they've not found anything consistent that would suggest that it's a risk factor for increasing nervous system diseases.
Thank you. And just returning, excuse me, I know Ms. Carrie, Rosemary Carrie, asked how many, she wanted to get a sense of how many members of the public are on tonight's Zoom. I currently see we have 15 panelists and we have 28 attendees at this point in time. And then Richard Rogers asks, what types of jobs will this create for people in Falmouth?
Yeah, that's not a question that we can answer right now. You know, the primary onshore jobs will be civil construction of, you know, putting down the, you know, putting down the cables and and substation instruction. Quite honestly, depends on what contractor gets the job, where they're located. You know, that's, that's, that's a, you know, that we're talking about a civil construction job years in the future.
Okay. All right, I don't want to be too, don't want to be too duplicative, but some, just noting, some folks are, I guess, just pulling out quotes from World Health Organization, some studies. Someone MH2020 is saying that some studies have found a link between childhood leukemia. Why are we doing this? They don't even have a plan yet. How much money are we making to possibly risk our children? Sam?
I think the generalizations are way too great because this is really low-frequency variation, 60 cycles. Those kinds of EMF that they call ionizing radiation are the things that actually can cause thermal heating, can cause necessarily organic chemicals to change. These frequencies of 60 cycles per second have never been shown to actually do any kind of damage to our chemistry or cell structures. It's just, you know, when you overgeneralize, electromagnetic fields are very different at different frequencies. I mean, and take a look at microwaves. A microwave oven can heat up and cook food. And it can even break down the organic structures. But those cycle, those frequencies are tens of thousands of times higher than the 60 cycles that power our houses and all of our electrical devices. So people are overgeneralizing when they think that electromagnetic fields are dangerous. They exist, but they're very different characteristics at different frequencies.
Madam Chair, if we could have Mr. Valberg just comment on the fact of what type of exposure we might find in our home, say, from a microwave? And just in a general comparison of what we're talking about here as the buried cables, if that's possible?
I, you're right. That's a good, that's a good question. And and first of all, I'd like to very much endorse what Mr. Patterson just said about the difference between ionizing and non-ionizing radiation in that they, there are higher frequencies, and particularly if you get up into the X-rays and, you know, medical radioisotopes and so forth. There are ionizing radiations that can actually disrupt biology, and they can break bonds, and they can, you know, damage DNA and so forth. But when you're down at these very low frequencies, that that's one of the issues that all of these scientific organizations have looked at is to see whether or not there is a mechanism by which these kinds of electric and magnetic fields can cause damage in biological tissues. And the answer is, they haven't found anything. A lot of scientists have tried very hard to do it. And and remember that we all live in a electromagnetic environment. There are electric fields from the clouds overhead that pass us by. And then there's, of course, the magnetic field of the earth that always points to the north. And those are steady, but we move around in them. So they are actually kind of time varying electric and magnetic fields that affect us. But they're, again, very low frequency. And so I think that's the, that's one of the key ingredients here that that are important.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a comment from John, and I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but noting that 28 people on Zoom is a really poor response. Why is this town not getting the message out? So this is the second time that this item has been on our agenda, which means that it's, you know, been in the agenda, been in the paper. It has generated actually a lot of emails from folks who are both raising concerns and then quite a few who are in favor. Why people decide to join on Zoom, it's the same as when we're in person. Why sometimes, you know, we don't get a lot of turnout? It's a number of reasons, but there are associations, neighborhood associations that are well aware of this. We've had, you know, conversations noting that it's on the agenda. So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, beyond sort of putting all the information out there and reaching out and making sure that it's on for multiple meetings so that it generates some interest. You know, we've kind of followed that same format for, you know, most issues that are really, you know, that we know are going to generate some strong emotions.
And Madam Chair, we actually had this, this is the third time. And Madam Chair, we actually had this, this is the third time. It was on last year when they brought the preliminary overview. Told us that they'd be coming back.
Yes, thank you. I had forgotten about that.
And if I could just make a comment, I think that 28 people in attendance is a pretty good attendance compared to a lot of our subjects. And I think it may indicate a confidence in our ability to ask these questions to represent the public.
There's still many people watching on television also.
Right.
Right. Yes. Okay. So. Okay, I'll just, I'll just read them because this is what we're doing. So John notes, the paper does not specify our agenda. And. I, I do think in fact our, isn't our agenda part of what they post?
Yes.
Yes, it always has been. And again, you can have that information sent directly to you, even if, if you don't want to take the step of looking in the paper or going online to the selectman's town, you know, to the town website, you can set it up so you don't even have to bother exerting that effort. And it can actually be sent to you, you know, onto your, your phone or email so that you have a, have that update. And then we have MH2020 noting, but they don't have a concrete plan. But they don't have a concrete plan, no. I guess he's asking that question.
Because they need this information that they're asking for, people, where they can make a concrete. I would like to move forward our discussion if we could, please.
Okay. Any other, yep, Sam, go ahead.
I, I looked through the agreement that we received as a candidate. And the one question I didn't see in there is whether we would be getting a bond so that if the town ended up with some sort of cleanup, be it from these preliminary, this preliminary test work, or even later on in the implementation, would that be in effect like we require from most contractors?
I think Frank could possibly answer that to Madam Chair.
Okay.
Frank, do you want to weigh in on that? And then maybe Mr. Hubbard?
Thank you, Megan. The issue of a bond is something that would come up, I think, when we discuss the host community agreement. We have not opened discussions on yet, but it is certainly something that is worthy of consideration. I know that, for example, the, the solar development that's being proposed to go into Blacksmith Shop Road, not Blacksmith Shop, yeah, Blacksmith Shop, Blacksmith Shop Road, Locust Hill Road, rather. We're talking about a bond right now, and that's solar development. So yes, a bond is something that we will talk about, but when we get to the host community.
Right. And Frank, oh, go ahead, Mr. Hubbard, go ahead.
Sorry. And good evening, everyone. Thank, thank you again for having us. So Mr. Patterson, I believe your question was specifically with the, the access agreements, just with posting a bond to return, return any of those properties back to their original status. All of the access agreements themselves have a duty to restore built into them. So as part of the obligation or part of the access to, to, to go onto those sites, to do, to do that, that survey work, we are agreeing upfront with the town that we will make sure we return it back to that, that original status. So there'll be, that we know, no remaining impacts when we're completed with the surveys. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the thing that, that I want to add though is that bonds typically, you know, require an insurer to come in and make sure that if that entity goes out of business, goes bankrupt, that there is somebody that will cover the cost of the town to restore it. Actually, we're asking for a third party to ensure that we are in a position to restore it if it ends up being on us.
Right. And, and what we're talking about here is a transient activity where, you know, drill a hole, we restore, we're done.
And I could just have one comment on that. I'm curious, would it be just as easy for you to drill the hole adjacent to the parking lot rather than in the parking lot? Because then there's really minimal damage.
I, I, I will recall, it's been quite a while since those agreements were drawn up. Tim, I mean, I, I, I don't know if it specifies the locate, precise location.
It just seems a shame to drill through the asphalt when the ground right next to it is easily accessible.
Yeah, I, we, that, that, that could be an option. I think we selected the parking lot location because we, we felt that, you know, that being previously disturbed might be a, might be a favorable location in terms of disturbing that and just patching back up the asphalt. But we could, you know, we could consider alternate locations as well if that's a, that's a point that, that's of interest. I think, you know, we, we were looking at, yeah.
It's relatively new. It seems a shame to, to make, put a hole in it.
Any other comments from this board? Frank, is there anything else that we need to know? At this preliminary juncture?
No, I think you've covered quite a bit here. This has been a rather lengthy discussion and we've covered a lot of, a lot of the issues. The, the Mayflower Wind folks have submitted to us three right of entry agreements. The two of them are for the landing, one at the Surf Drive Beach and the other at the Falmouth Heights Beach. And the third one, of course, is right of entry for the property at 565 Blacksmith Shop Road, which is the town composting facility. In each case, they're asking for a non-exclusive right to enter upon the property, which means that we can still use these properties for our own purposes, that we're not leasing it for the, just giving them the right of, of entry for 180 day period. And the purpose is specified to conduct surveys, soil tests, borings, ground penetrating radar tests and other measurements to determine if the subject parcels are suitified, are suitable for the intended purpose. And then to address the issue just raised, there is a provision in the agreement that any disturbance to parcels will be restored. There's also a requirement that they provide us with evidence of a million dollars of general comprehensive liability insurance, naming the town as an additional insured, and that they will have all necessary permits and the work will be coordinated with the DPW, the police and any other agency we deem necessary. And I think for your own confidence, one of the more important provisions of the right of entry agreement is there's a specific disclaimer that any obli, that there is no obligation on the part of the town to enter into any future agreement regarding permanent easements, transfers of property interest or anything else affecting these properties. So they're, they're going to come in, they're going to do the test, they're going to report the test results, and then the negotiations start with no precondition.
And then can you, thank you, that, that's helpful to summarize it for that 180 day period, that window for them to do that initial testing. Then can you just speak to that consultancy, you know, how would that then play in? So they do their tests and then there's a commitment for $50,000 for the town to hire an expert essentially to review the information that they've been able to glean from those tests and then help advise us. Is that correct?
That's correct. And Mr. Suso approached Mayflower a couple of weeks ago with the idea of them funding consultant agreement, and they have agreed to do so. They submitted a letter agreement which we have reviewed. And it basically provides that Mayflower will reimburse the town for its actual costs to engage a third party consultant for the same 180 day period. And that the town of Falmouth will be responsible for securing the consultant. Mayflower will have nothing to do with it. We're, we're going to go out and do our own procurement on the, on the consultant. The, the total amount of the reimbursement is not to exceed $50,000. The consultant's work will be for the benefit of Falmouth. We do not have to share with Mayflower the result of the consultant's work. If there are any tests done, we can keep them to ourselves if we want to. The, there's no partnership or any agreement or any legal obligation between the parties here. It's strictly a, an agreement to reimburse for actual cost. And finally, the, the advice that we receive from our consultant, we can act upon it independently. We don't have to answer to Mayflower. So.
Thank you, Frank.
Based upon that, I approve the, the consultant agreement as the, as the form.
Thank you. And, and let me just summarize a couple of comments that are coming in. And just perhaps Frank, you can just clarify. First and foremost, this is as we noted, the third time that the matter is on for this preliminary initial agreement for 180 day window for Mayflower to do some testing. It is not the actual long-term agreement and it is in no way binding of any long-term agreement. What was, what is our obligation as far as notice? An individual saying we haven't properly get notified the public in order to accept this limited agreement. Frank, can you just, I don't think that's accurate, but can you speak to that?
Well, I think it was commented earlier by somebody that we don't really know who the abutters are. So there's no abutter notice. As far as granting a right of entry onto property to conduct tests, there's no requirement for a butter notice. This is quite different from say a zoning board of appeals where you're granting a special permit of a variant and you have to give notice to everybody who's in a butter or within 300 feet. There's no specific requirement here. There, there isn't, there is not.
Thank you. Nancy?
Um, I was just going to say what Mr. Duffy just said. And, and basically what I heard him say is that we are only agreeing to testing, correct? With no, no further commitment. And I think the second piece that's really, really important, that any consultant, and, and you explain this really well, is certainly separate and has nothing to do with Mayflower. It, it's hired by the town for the benefit of the town. So basically you answered my question.
That's right. From the very beginning, we insisted that the consultant be totally independent, that we chose the consultant and that the consultant answers only to us.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board before we move forward?
Just one more comment to people who continue with the comments that the, the meeting was not posted correctly. We've got an awful lot of emails in support of this project, so I think people are aware that this is happening and it's on the board tonight, so. I don't know.
For the, for the third time, as you noted. Okay, thank you. So, um, what is the pleasure of this board?
I would like to say that I think that as far as just preliminary permission to do some test borings and get information for their learning, whether or not they can move forward this project. I think they've provided quite a lot of information and I welcome to invite the public that they can go and look at this packet and look at all the information that's been provided. The expert testimony of Professor Valberg and the other, Christopher Long, look at the guy's record of expertise and all the projects they've completed. And I think, I think we've got exactly what we asked for as far as the health and safety concerns. And as far as the damage to the public property, we don't know which area is going to be chosen. There's three choices. I think they need to find out whether or not one of them is preferable over the other. Then they can come back and we can discuss whether or not it's really something that we want to do.
Again, there'd be a further discussion if there was any potential consideration of a long-term partnership. So there'd be further, and again, at that point in time, there would be notice to abutters. There would be, you know, I, I would call it a far more, you know, sort of formal and probably prolonged process, particularly if we're still in the era of Zoom and virtual meetings, so.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, English Braga, aye. Right. Thank you. Yep, Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to be certain that this also includes authorization for the agreement on hiring an independent consultant to be reimbursed by the Mayflower Wind?
Yes. We can do a second vote if you want, but my understanding was that Mr. Brown's was encompassed that particular component because that is really critical.
That was my intent, but if you need another vote, that's fine.
Frank, do you think we're covered in our vote? I think he's saying yes, that we're good. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully COVID will abate. And, you know, if anybody has any great suggestions for a house that I can rent this spring and, next spring and summer that will allow us to bring a dog down and, and I'll see you all at Coffee Obsession or elsewhere, you know, somewhere else in the mornings throughout the spring and summer.
Fingers crossed, right? So.
Rentals are tough. You might have to build one.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right, take care. Okay, thank you. Next, we have discussion on participation in upcoming November 16th town meeting. We should have our moderator, David Viera. But the goal basically, we covered some of it with Scott earlier, is really just to talk about where it is that we stand in terms of town meeting. You know, we have a limited warrant. And we, as we have said on many occasions, it was really structured in that way. And people, I want to really thank the public. I know there are petitioners out there who had, who have things that they are passionate about and care about. And, you know, the goal was really to try and keep this limited, so we're, we're in that space together for a limited period of time. And, and I think that we've done that with, excuse me, this particular warrant. The other, and I'm just trying to see if, I know it's a little bit later, so I don't know if David was not, excuse me, able to stick around with us. I don't see him in there, but, okay. I did speak with him earlier this week. And just a few of the things that we went over, you know, when we come into the space, what happened last time is that everybody congregated towards one side of the fieldhouse. And really, excuse me, as Scott pointed out, you know, we're following a lot of the protocols, actually to, to a sort of more conservative extent that the, the students and faculty and staff are already doing at the schools. So, you know, please utilize that full space. We spaced everybody out six feet. The way it was in September is that everyone kind of was on one side and there was a lot of empty space over towards the, the right of where the moderator was. And so let's just try to make sure we utilize that space. I'm sorry. The, obviously the HVAC system is, you know, we know it was a little bit chilly, so please come prepared. It's chilly for a reason. That air is really moving like that for a reason. And it's to really, you know, enhance our safety, so we should anticipate that it's going to be like that. It does look like David Viera is on the call without video. So maybe if we can have David join. David, are you there? Okay, maybe not. See if we can get him to, to join us in a moment. Let's see. Anything else, Mr. Suso, about town meeting as far as an update?
Just confirming, Madam Chair, that as was requested earlier, we will have K9, KN95 masks for those town meeting members that would be so interested. And we are going to be enhancing the sound system as well with the assistance of Carson Audio and Carlson Audio. And all the health and safety measures, as has been noted by you and by Health Agent Scott Moran, will be in place as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from this board? We would just remind people to keep your masks on. I know it was hard to hear when you come up to make your comment, but we're just all going to have to really try to articulate and talk a little bit louder and, and a little bit slower because taking the masks on and off to make your comments really defeats the purpose. And, you know, we, we really want this to be, you know, really want this to be as safe as possible. And again, as you heard Scott McGann note, if those numbers are to shift in any way, clearly he will notify the town moderator, clerk, Julian and this board, and we would, you know, address that accordingly. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In terms of behavior protocol, I think it's important whoever's speaking doesn't move forward and essentially get closer to the person that's sitting in front of them. I noticed that happened a couple of times. People sort of got a hold of the mic and then carried it forward. People sort of got a hold of the mic and then carried it forward and they closed that distance between themselves and the next person. So that's just a behavioral protocol that we need to be much more conscious about.
Great. Thank you. Um, and the other thing is if you, you know, someone does not plan to attend, it is of course an excused absence if you don't plan to attend because of any concerns and, and you would reach out to, um, town moderator and to clerk, uh, Palmer. Okay? Oh, the one other thing I know David and I talked about, question on, is if there's an article that you need information on, I, I'm just urging all of us to do our homework this week and to try and get as much of that information in advance, whether it's reaching out to the board, uh, whether it's reaching out to a particular department or individual to try to get some of your questions answered, um, to the best that you can in advance. So we all come in with as much information as possible so we can have some productive discussions, um, without, you know, answering some of those really simple questions that a phone call could have answered. So just as town meeting members, it's really our duty to come prepared.
That's a good point.
Sorry. Frank, was there anything on town meeting that you needed to announce? Okay. All right. Next, we are going to give a status update on drive-in movies and musical events at Cape Cod Fairgrounds and related noise complaints. So, um, maybe, Mr. Suso, do you want to, um, just start us off with that? This is sort of twofold. Um, I see Kevin and Elena joining us. I think, you know, it's, it's twofold. It's one, some of the complaints that we've heard. Also, um, obviously the current regulations from the governor impact. My, my understanding is they also impact drive-ins, um, at least from the summary that we had from, um, town council. So if we could just perhaps hear from you, Mr. Suso, and then we can get an update from town council if we need it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as, as the board's aware, you'd asked to have a follow-up, uh, discussion this evening on this. And, um, my understanding is the, uh, the proposed musical events have been concluded since your last, uh, regular meeting. We did continue to receive some, uh, email concerns as I think the board is aware about what some people deem to be excessive noise levels, uh, and did have, uh, some follow-ups on that. My understanding is that no further musical events are proposed at the moment, but perhaps, uh, Mr. Pacheco and, uh, Ms. Rogers could confirm that. And I think the, uh, as to, uh, any follow-ups, that would be the determination of the board if there would be requests for, uh, uh, events going forward. And that would be discussed at that time.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other, are there any specific questions from this board on this issue? Yep. Doug, and then we can bring in, um, Ms. Rogers and Mr. Pacheco.
One question I have is whether or not we overlook the possibility of, uh, automobiles having huge sound systems of their own, which may be amplifying this music. And when you've got, I don't know, 50 cars, I don't know how many cars they have, but 50 or a hundred cars with really big sound systems, that itself can be a really loud sound. I've heard cars that come by me, you know, with the boombox and the bass and stuff. It's just can be so loud that it's unbelievable. So I wonder if that's part of the problem.
Okay. Well, we can find that out. So, good evening, um, Elena, Kevin, how are you?
Hello.
You're both still muted? Yep. Perfect. You guys must be sitting next to each other. Yeah. I can hear you. I can hear the, the echo between the two of you. So, um, you know, if you want to start by, if we want to start by just noting that we did receive, um, and I think we tried to pass on some of them, but we did continue to receive, we, we certainly received folks who were in support of the programming that has gone on there. And then we also received quite a few, um, you know, complaints from folks that live kind of all around. When, when you look at the different addresses that they had, it wasn't coming from one particular area, but we're noting, uh, noise complaints. In fact, oh, you know, several folks who said we were really happy with it during COVID just because we knew people needed things. But if, if this is a more long-term, um, proposal that they had concerns about it. So can you just speak to, um, you know, that, the particular noise complaints in general and thoughts about, um, remediating that or, you know, going forward?
Okay. There we go. Opened up. Sorry. Thank you. Uh, well, thank you to the select board for having us tonight. We hope you and your families are doing well. We're grateful for the opportunity that you've given us, um, to be one of the only venues in Massachusetts during these troubling times. I, tonight I can lend my 25 years of audio expertise for any questions, uh, as well as represent 5,000 people that have supported our venue. We provided Falmouth with a world-class venue to, for entertainment, uh, experiences with your family. Sadly, due to the issues at hand, we have chosen to cancel the remainder of this year. In our new proposal that we were speaking with Mr. Suso about, uh, to transform the fairgrounds into a winter wonderland, uh, we had plans to do a holiday drive-through, uh, experience and outdoor skating rink, uh, performances on the weekends, um, or select few weekends, just like maybe around the holidays. It's going to brought some additional residual income to the town of Falmouth and given us something to do, um, as well as brought some tourists in, in the off-season. We're gathering right now our metrics for the 2021 proposal, um, and other locations. As far as any future events to address, uh, any noise issues, um, what we'll look forward to, uh, to doing is we're going to move the stage about 35 degrees. It was the angle of the stage that really affected the, uh, the Compass Drive and, and, um, Plum Hollow neighborhoods. We, we gave a, in page 27 of the proposal from, I believe it was in August, after we reevaluated our entertainment license. If I could, if we can screen share this, um, if, if that's okay, I can show you the, the layout if you'd like to see it or, um, or if it's a mute point you do our season ending. But I can show you that in the proposal where we showed exactly where, uh, if the areas that would be affected.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Are you seeing this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. So this here are, is basically, this is a, uh, this is how we determine our different areas, um, and stage placements. And, and originally when we looked at the stage placement, part of the, the noise issues are that due to COVID and having to be inside your vehicles, we needed an area that was great, you know, great in size for, um, for that purpose. Big open space, uh, not many trees holding us back. Uh, across the street, we have, uh, Cape Cod Church, another large facility and lots of open spaces. And that's what contributed to the additional, uh, sound travel. Obviously the sound will travel, uh, regardless of what goes on in the area. I mean, even sitting in this office right now, we're on the fairgrounds, you know, I can hear the Jake brakes and vehicles driving by. I actually had to turn up my Zoom literally right as I started speaking. So everything travels. What you're seeing here is this would be our system at the maximum capacity. So this is a world-class line array system, which there are other area drive-ins, um, like in Yarmouth, where they're trying to implement this versus an FM system. So we do have the FM, um, transmission that has been running for our concerts and our movies, um, depending on whether people either open their windows, um, or choose not to listen to it. There's a slight delay. Sound travels at 1.2 milliseconds at like 68 degrees. And so if you have a snare drum or an acoustic guitar or somebody singing on a stage, you're going to hear that coming from the stage at one sound source. And then 50 feet away, you're going to hear 50 milliseconds, uh, or I'm sorry, five milliseconds of a delay. Now you start adding in 250 vehicles, that delay just increases and then we lose all control of sound. If everybody does come in like Mr. Brown stated earlier, so thank you for that. But if everybody comes in with their sound systems and then they start competing with each other to get rid of that delay from the car next to you or from the stage, basically it just turns up into, it turns into whose car stereo is louder. And then we literally have no control over the system by doing that. So we chose to implement our, our world-class technology, our line array system. And we used this, this was in the proposal on August 27th that we emailed to, uh, to you guys, uh, regarding our sound dispersion. So this is if the system was all the way up, completely maxed out, this is what you would get. It at least shows you the dispersion. Now, if you look at the, um, at the blue, uh, maybe let me zoom out a little bit so you can see where we're going with this. So 55 and 60 is this, is this blue color. That's me speaking right now. 55, this, this is in regards to decibels. The turbines that you guys were, were working with, I think they were 103 decibels. And so that's where, where, you know, um, some of the, the prior, uh, knowledge that I have of, of decibels to speak on this left board. And that would be black. The measurements that I've been taking, we have been logging every single event, um, even prior to the complaints that I've known about. We, we've had a few complaints early on that we moved to the speaker system, we changed the angles of the speakers to this here. And then around that time was when we renegotiated our permit. And so the noise, like, yes, technically you hear the noise, but it's, it's depending on where you're at, if you deem it to be excessive or not. Right now with COVID, everybody's home more, everybody's doing the remote learning thing, especially now in the shoulder season. You know, everyone's just, their, their tempers are, are a little, uh, easily triggered, I think, compared to other times, but that's, I'm no expert in that. I'm an expert in audio. And this is what I'm showing you right now. This is what we do for other municipalities, other locations across the country. This is what we do. I just happen to live three doors down, um, in this location. So all these little blips, these are houses. All of these, these are all houses here. So as you can see, the church blocks a lot of this residual stuff. The, the red area is, I believe, 80 decibels. Yeah. So that's 75 and 80 decibels. Now, to give you a, a feeler in that packet that we sent you on August 27th is a vacuum cleaner at three feet away is 70. Curbside of 151, 80 decibels. You know, our disco, if you were right in front of the speaker stack would be 100. But even over here, we never hit 100. Purple is, is, you know, 95 and that would be right in front of our speaker in the field. When you're standing at our concessions, which is over here, if you have a conversation, you can't be, understand what's, what's actually happening on the stage. And that's why when anytime the police have come by, we were never cited any violations because when they came by, um, you know, they had to on formality and I, I welcomed them in to see what they genuinely thought. And, uh, we're not trying to, uh, cause any issues with neighbors. Many of them have supported us, um, but this map does show the dispersion. So our plans for the future, which, um, which I didn't add to this, which I wasn't sure I'd be able to screenshot, so I, but our plans for the future is basically turning this, moving it, uh, to a different part of the, uh, uh, different location, the fairgrounds, moving the angle. So if, if you would imagine this setup firing in between, uh, uh, the wildlife, if you look at how thick this is, it's basically, we changed the angle of 35 degrees and it would totally get away from any neighborhoods. Early on, after we seen this, at the time, we only had a handful of concerts booked. So we, we were going to test the waters and we were going with the, the layout of the grounds, the capacity that we could benefit from. And then also at the time, we had, there was a lot of buzz, so there was a lot of people in town trying to come out and, and see it. So, you know, in our defense, we thought, okay, it's a fairground. This is typical of what they do. They host events, uh, you know, we're going to work with the lay of the land. We put the stage along the tree line. We looked at this and saw, well, 50 decibels is conversational speech. The green areas are 65 and that's where some of these homes have some issues. So if you look at, I'm sure some of the, the complaints have come in, there's certain individuals that I won't name publicly, but we, we've both seen email threads on, um, as far as selectmen in, in our team. You know, one of those houses right on Poppy Hollow, I'm sorry, in Plum Hollow is, is right here. So these few houses, they're in between the church and a field and the back parking lot of the church. They, they do experience some more. They're around that 70 range. And that's where you, you can't hear it inside the house. You would have to turn your television off to hear it. But those are some claims that have been made and I believe them to be true. You know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that a concert can't be heard. It absolutely will be heard. Is it excessive? That's for, you know, I would believe the police force to decide. Unfortunately, the bylaw, uh, for me, unfortunately, the bylaw states 150 feet from the source. And these here are about, you know, about a thousand feet, 150 feet is this, this box that's right here. So to contain that, you know, you're, you're going to hear it. If it's excessive or not, typically in other municipalities, from working in Quincy or Weymouth, they have written in their town law that it needs to be 70 decibels at the perimeter or, uh, some of them are as extreme as 65. But then, so that would be the, the fence perimeter of the venue. So that's typically what we work with. That's why when we built this model, I saw that it was around 60, 65, except for across the street, which is a big church and a big empty parking lot over here to go and over it. So we thought, well, let's try it out. And that, once again, to remind you, this is the system at full capacity. So if I lower it 10 decibels, then this basically, the green becomes blue, the, you know, which would be 65, then your yellow would become the green and so on and so forth. And so everything would be dropped, brought down by 10 decibels. And so that's how we've tried to come, uh, combat some of these issues because only having a few, uh, events left on the calendar after we met with Mr. Suso, and I appreciate you taking the time and your busy schedule to do so. That was our, our answer. If we had this conversation, say you've given us permission in July and we had this conversation in August, I would easily take a day or two, pack up the system, move it over 35 degrees and change the angle. You know, financially didn't make much sense because of, uh, we're looking at, okay, well, we have three more concerts, uh, three more events. Of those, only one was on the concert stage. After we met with Mr. Suso, I remember there was a complaint, uh, after we met and there was some concern across the board. You know, why didn't we change anything? Why didn't we do, we, I assure you, we did. We take this very seriously. This is not just a, a passion or a hobby for us. This has been my career for the last 25 years, as well as our professional staff. The other thing that you're not seeing in this picture is the movie feel. So we have a separate sound system over here that is not as defined as this one. So the folks that live in Ashuma and on Courier, when we have events like the Stevie Nicks Concert Experience that's on the big screen, there's a smaller system here, but honestly, it's a little less controlled because it's more stacked, it's more directional in your face versus this over here. These are speakers flown at 20 feet in the air. These are stacked at six feet in the air at the bottom of a hill. So that basically just rides up to the top of the hill. And then these folks here don't like it very much. Some of them actually do. We actually have a lot of walk-ins from a few of these houses. We said, oh, if you can hear it, you might as well just come join us. And a lot of them choose to do that. Unfortunately, they're the ones that do not choose to do that, that are, uh, that are complaining, um, and rightfully so. I understand. We built this here to serve the community. We lost money in this venture. We're not trying to, uh, profit and run. Like I would figure, it was a very simple, simple thought process for me was we have the equipment, we have the experience, we have the manpower all locally, what can we do? And, um, it was the, one of the only legal ways to host events and have people have some sense of normalcy in, uh, during COVID. So that was essentially why we did what we did. So any of the people that are listening or, or any of the butters, uh, we're deeply sorry to affect your lives. You know, hopefully we come back in the future and we make these changes and show you this computer model, uh, which is spot on. This is millions of dollars of research and development. This is not some toy or computer, um, you know, video game. This is, uh, legit and you can take a decibel meter with chief of police and ride these, these, uh, perimeters and it will read exactly what it shows here. And so with that, I guess I'll stop sharing the screen and we can move on to other things. So I hope that was informative. Do you have any questions?
Doug Jones? Yep. Go ahead.
Of the concerts, how many of them were, you say were acoustic?
Of concerts? We had, uh, 15.
15 of them were acoustic?
Yes. We had, um, let me just write totals here. So, so we were only open for 49 days. Of that, we've had 11 concerts on the stage. We've had 38 movies. So we had a third of the concerts, uh, before the movies, we've had over 15 acoustic performances.
Of the 11 concerts, you said 15 of them were acoustic? I guess I don't understand that number.
Okay. So we have two performance areas, one being our concert stage, which on that stage, we've had acoustic performances as well. But in total, there was, so there was 11, uh, times that we've used that stage. Then we've also have another field that has 38 times we've used that field for movies and performances as well.[1781.88] Did you, do you understand that? Have you seen the proposal? Do I need to go back into this? I'll share the screen again if you'd like to.
So the eleven, of the eleven on the big stage, how many of those were acoustic?
Of those, four.
Because uh, the application does say mostly acoustic.
Yep, which I'm telling you right now, we had a fifteen acoustic performances. And um, and then, so that's the majority is is that, and then it also states small groups.
And how was the largest group you had on that stage?
The largest group was six, one time.
Uh, the pictures that are shown on Facebook are showing people not in their cars, but all over the place. I was a little concerned about that also.
What was the date on that one?
Um, I did not take a look at the data, but uh, it would be fairly fairly regular that when they were coming to concerts, they were dancing out outside of their cars. And I just, that wasn't out the expectation, but.
Understood. Uh, after October fifth, I have a voicemail I can play for you from your Board of Health that stated that we could have up to two hundred and fifty people um, attending the shows outside of their concert chair. Let me find this. Would you like to hear this?
No, I guess I if if Mr. McGinn said that that just wasn't what you had asked for, so.
And so at the time, we we did state that we would follow COVID regulations was what we, I thought we agreed upon was that that, you know, due to COVID regulations that we would follow in here to those.
Well, the application said you're gonna have people stay in the cars, is what the application said, and that's what we agreed to.
Understood.
Nancy, did you have your hand up? No, okay. Any other questions from the board? Uh, I know that um, Richard Rogers is asking about um, letters of support. Uh, we can't give you a number. We'd have to go back and look over the weeks of the folks that wrote letters of support. There were certainly individuals who wrote in support. Um, but, you know, I would say that we we had probably more, and someone on this board can correct me, but more complaints about it. Uh, certainly, we had, you know, some of the folks who complained complained more than once, so you can count that, you know, i- in different ways. Um, but, you know, I think fair to say that, well, you know, there's certainly lots of good experiences that people had here. As, you know, you're well aware, and we've talked about now on a couple of occasions, there's sort of that chronic, uh, which I think, you know, you're trying to give some information with your, um, you know, your visual that you just shared. There's, you know, really some chronic complaints coming from, um, you know, sometimes similar groups of people or people, you know, spread out around around town. But um, it, you know, it was fairly widespread, and some of the folks were, um, like I said, individuals who said positive things, but noted that the noise was just too much, you know, for them on a regular basis. Yeah, uh, Doug Brown and then Kevin, you can go ahead, Doug.
Mr. Pacheco, do you think you have a better plan to manage what you talked about with the competing sound systems in the cars? Will you consider maybe doing away with the uh, audio in in on the radio to the cars and just projecting the sound yourself, so it can be more controlled?
Yes, I I would agree that that would definitely fix some of the problems. And depending on, you know, what the world brings us with COVID and and how we can look at this in the future. Um, you know, maybe we wouldn't have to deal with cars, but I foresee us uh, coming coming to the board with a similar plan. Honestly, like, I don't think we're gonna get back to typical live events until the fall of twenty-twenty-one. Um, and so I I foresee SCS talking about the same thing, and I believe that um, with more speaker control and uh, just a little more time. I mean, we we haven't started doing that until it was September first, when we really started trying to dial this in, um, which only gives us a few weekends to try to try to make any corrections. Um, so with a little more time, and then if we go back to the to the diagram that I showed you, and we we changed the angle of the stage, I strongly feel that that would uh, mitigate any issues with the neighbors.
Okay.
Great, so, oh, go ahead, Doug.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, could you speak again to the number of attendees, and how many people do you think uh, were impacted or benefit from?
Yep, uh, we've got uh, uh, between four and five thousand visitors, like, you know, we're we're still working on some of our metrics to see like some of the economic impact. Like I said, we've only been operation forty-nine days. Um, so depending on what the season brings, you know, I know other area drive-ins uh, that have had more uh, time um, and a little more uh, they've had some, a little more time to uh, to to book acts and uh, work with town and the local Chamber of Commerce is to help support. Uh, they brought in millions of dollars of uh, residual economic impact into their community. Um, I believe in Yarmouth, it was somewhere around twenty something million uh, was brought in, and most of that was due to live performances. I'd like to note that the very first live performance that we've had outside of only the movies was the reason why we spoke last. Um, and we talked about the permit, because we gotta cease and desist, because we had two solo performers. And once we started selling tickets, uh, which was gonna be a solo act and then a movie, because of that solo act, we sold so many tickets just from bringing that one member in. Um, we had cars from all over the state for that one particular show where we lost a thousand dollars. And then we had a hundred and fifty cars that we had to turn away one hour before doors um, for that solo act. And then we had such great success at that, bringing that act in, that we, that's why we figured, well, let's just cancel the movie, since fifty percent of our ticket needs to go to the movie. And we should put another solo performer on, and we'll we'll have a great day. Um, and so that was, that was the last reason why we spoke, and that was the reason for the cease and desist is because, yes, technically, it wasn't clear that we did say we would have a performer in a movie. We just had such a big impact bringing a performer in. Um, and that brings in a lot of people from other areas, you know, for the movies, you can go to Elfley, you can go to Yarmouth, you can go to Hyannis, you can go to the Village Green, you can get a movie. If we're bringing in a live performer, like, we have world-class equipment here. We are sitting on a unicorn, and you have such a gem here between the Barnstable Agricultural Society, us as a local company, and having a team like yourselves to work together, like, you know, you, I think there's a lot of um, benefits that could be brought here. Obviously, we're here for the noise, and so we can stick to that, but I'm sure with some time, when we finish the metrics, you can find out what what's going on with it.
Yeah, let me just stop you for one sec- second, Kevin. I think I think the important, you know, the takeaways are, one, when you come, you know, for a permit, it it has to be, you know, comprehensive and specific. And I know that this was sort of the first time you're going through the process, so I totally get it. Um, but, you know, at at now you have some time to really think about what your model's gonna be, and really make sure that that language is is clear. Because again, you know, it's it's just about the public being able to weigh in. So if they see that we're looking at a permit and it just says movies and acoustics, you know, maybe the neighbors don't bother coming. When they look at and say, whoa, wait a minute, they're gonna have majority live performances, maybe they, you know, come in and weigh in and ask you questions. So one piece is really being sure that 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 application is comprehensive and and fully fleshed out. Um, and and then, you know, the other piece really is just, um, you know, everybody loves, you know, bringing in, you know, music and the vitality of the arts, and really being able to offer those things to um, the public. But we do have to weigh that, you know, that other component that this, the the fairgrounds have never been, it sounds like you live in the area, so you know the fairgrounds, while they've had acts, have never been utilized to the degree where, you know, five days of the week or four days of the week, there are, you know, large musical performances, the type that you guys are putting together. So that is something new for that area. That generally isn't the way that those fairgrounds have been used. So it's it's new for the folks that live, you know, near there. Um, so anyway, Nancy?
I I also think in in um, preparing the permit and being really thoughtful about it, the second half of that, from my perspective, is um, entering into that agreement with that, with us, and then sticking to that, um, what the permit allows. I think it's really important um, that that you're willing to do that.
Oh, absolutely. Um, we didn't violate the permit at all. We, in my, my opinion, we um, we are, we had thirty-eight movies, which is our primary. And then we, of those, we we had fifteen acoustic acts. We never went over our curfew, not once, ever. We've never been cited by the police, ever. We've uh, never had more than six people on stage, ever. You know, we've rented out our venue to numerous PTO groups and um, you know, so I I I feel like what we represented was close to it. I think the interpretation of that, you know, like, the the meeting that we we didn't see on October twenty-sixth, there was lots of uh, you know, almost every uh, everything that was that I've I've viewed it uh, today, that everything that was said on the board was, it mostly began with, I think, and it seems. There wasn't any facts behind it, in my opinion. So I, you know, I'm I'm here today to let you know the facts that we had the thirty-eight movies and and um, and a lot of acoustic performances, which were primary. Um, in our, I know you keep looking at the primary acoustic, but you're also missing the other part of the permit, which said small groups. Small group to me is six people. Um, and that's, that was it. And so we had amplification on the permit, you know, we had live performances on the permit. So I I felt that it was there. I've given you numerous packets of multiple pages of information. Um, you know, the first time we met, like, I I really, and I am thankful, so I'm not trying to sound ungrateful, because I really am. Um, and we will definitely look at in the future the permit process and um, hopefully just have some more conversation. That's the only way to really understand each other, is to just ask the questions, and let's do our best to um, to make sure that everybody understands, especially me. So, um, you know, I I
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Kevin, just just, you know, to be totally candid, when when you, when it was first brought to us, it was really presented as a drive-in. And yes, the permit kind of, you know, included that language, but it was really presented, and I get it, it morphed and it changed. It's not a bad thing. But the point is, as you're looking forward, it's gonna be really important to, again, think about what that that model is gonna be as you go forward, now that you've had, even though it's kind of a short and crazy season, now that you've been able to look at, to really think about what that model is gonna be, and present really what the model is. So if now the shift is gonna be a little bit less of the movie, because that piece of it isn't a good business model for you, and it's gonna be mostly the the music, then, you know, the the permits just need to reflect that. I mean, again, it's just sort of, you know, really, it, when we issue a permit or a license, it, you know, it's it's usually pretty specific. And so that's why we had that second meeting with you, because it really kind of went beyond, you know, what had been discussed initially. And so obviously, the board is willing to work with you. It's just that we've got a, you know, we just, we need to have that information as we go forward. It makes it, it's appropriate for the public. I mean, the public, it's just, you know, it's not about the members of the board. It's the fact that the public has the right to really know what's gonna happen, so that they have the right to then, you know, voice their their thoughts or concerns. Either way.
Mad Chair, we really need to move on. This isn't even, we're not even voting on anything tonight. We've spent a lot of time discussing this.
Yep.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, Kevin, and just give me one.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I'll thank you for your time either way. Yeah, we've been sitting through as well, so I I applaud you all for everything you do for the community, because it's late. Um, so we'll get there. I'm not even sure if I could drive home now because of the curfew. Um, so uh, but either way, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. We'll look at all the details in the future and um, work to our best ability. Uh, in my defense, we we were morphing with the COVID rules, and so as time allowed and things became a little less restricted, that was partly why we tried to change the model, because originally, we weren't even able to have live performances.
Yep.
So we, you know, so that that was kind of some of it, was that. So um, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, take care.
Thanks for what you did out there. I think it was a good thing, positive overall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a review and adopt committee handbook update. Um, Peter, are you going to present this to us? Or not present it, but I mean, are you gonna?
Well, I can just speak briefly.
Yeah, Doug, go ahead.
I was gonna say.
Thanks to Judy, Judy Fenwick, for the, taking the initiative and doing a ton of work on putting this book together. And it's a really professional production. If you take a look at it, she has really done a world of work. And Peter's professional advice on where to edit and what to edit. And uh, you know, I was I was there to participate, but I think really Judy did most of the work. So thank goodness for her.
Any questions about what you've seen? Sam?
No, this is just a comment. I enjoyed the last page, which gave kind of a history of Falmouth. Uh, that was a kind of a nice little uh, addition to add to this and that.
It is. It's a very welcoming book, and it really gives you a sense of what it's gonna be like to be on a committee and the importance of it.
Great. Excellent. Um, okay, I would take a motion if we don't have any further discussion. Motion to adopt it.
Go move.
Okay, Patterson, has a motion. Do I have a second?
Own second.
Okay, uh, motion of second. All those in favor? Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And and thank you, thank you to everybody that worked on it.
Yes, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Doug, and a huge thank you to Judy. Thank you.
It really should be called The Fenwick Guide to Local Government.
Yeah, as as should many things. Okay, we are discussing or voting on extended temporary outdoor restaurant seating license process. Uh, Mr. Suso and I see Assistant Town Council, Irene Mullen, welcome.
Hi.
Who wants to walk us through this?
I I can jump in, and then I'll turn it over to Irene if I could, Mad Chair.
Sure.
The the board in your packet has a uh, an excellent summary, and we want to thank uh, Irene Mullen for her excellent work in reviewing all of the uh, the latest information from Governor Baker and the nuances, and coming up essentially with uh, three basic scenarios, which are spelled out in the proposed procedures. Uh, and this is presuming that the board desires to move forward with uh, a similar model to having staff members uh, issue these permits on your behalf. Uh, one of the important nuances is that it was determined that a uh, a further discussion, an opportunity for public input would be in order. Uh, there would be the opportunity to provide for that. And uh, this could, if the board is so inclined, this could uh, carry you through actually uh, the summer season of next year, uh, is one of the uh, the three demarcations that could be considered. So having said that, if it's agreeable, we'd be happy to have Irene uh, make some further comments and descriptions.
Go ahead, Irene. Thank you.
Um, so this procedure um, is based on Order Fifty that the governor issued. That gives the Select Board um, the authority to extend outdoor dining permitting um, on an emergency basis for the pandemic, um, until sixty days after the end of the declared emergency. That may be longer than the date that um, this uh, proposed procedure is based on. Um, for that, uh, November first of twenty-one was picked um, to give some predictability to the process. Um, if the pandemic emergency um, is ended before that time, all permits would automatically expire sixty days after the end of the pandemic emergency. So if it did terminate, say, in April, um, you know, April first, then the permits would all expire June. So um, it's it's a a maximum November first of twenty-one date that we use for this procedure. But I did want to bring to your attention that that's discretionary. Um, you could choose to approve a procedure that provides approvals that do extend indefinitely um, under the governor's order. Um, as Mr. Suso mentioned, um, the procedure contains three categories. Um, those were devised to reflect what um, is perceived to be differing levels of a staff attention that need to be given to different types of um, outdoor dining applications. Um, in particular, it was anticipated that a large number of pre-existing outdoor dining um, operations that were permitted in uh, May will be potentially operating next summer under similar conditions. Um, those all were reviewed pretty extensively the first time around. Um, and thus, a category was created for those that wanted to apply for an extension based on those existing terms that were carefully put together with collaboration between town staff, town manager, and applicants. Um, so in that situation, if nothing was being changed, if it was a replay of summer twenty, um, that could be in a streamlined process that would put less burden on applicants to put together a really extensive application again. So that's one of the categories. Another category is for um, winter dining, uh, winter outdoor dining. Um, there were some particular concerns that were raised and are reflected in the governor's order about changing conditions um, to take into account things that I don't think any of us were really considering in May, um, under Order Thirty-five, which um, by its terms, terminated November first of twenty. Um, I don't think anyone was considering the impact of snow removal, um, particularly in um, areas that are currently licensed um, for use of town property like sidewalks. Um, there's concerns in parking lots, safety concerns, plowing, um, obstructions, um, as well as heating. Um, so most people were not using outdoor heaters in July, um, but if they're gonna be doing that in January, um, I think there's some safety concerns there that staff wanted to take a look at and have input on. Um, so we created a separate category for winter dining. Um, and um, those would be a more comprehensive application using a specific form. Um, and then the third category is entirely new, outdoor dining um, approvals. Um, for, for example, there have been some restaurants that have recently opened in town um, during this unprecedented time. Um, and those businesses could be looking for um, outdoor dining. Um, and those businesses could be looking for, um, outdoor dining, either for the first time in the winter or for the first time for next summer season. Um, as well as i- in that category is anyone that wants to change their existing approval. Um, so having operated for one season, having taken into account, um, their space or getting approval to use new space from, for example, a landlord. Um, if there was to be a change in the operations, that would again need to be looked at more closely than merely extending what they had been doing that was previously approved. Um, so those are the three categories. Um, another feature that we added to this procedure that was not part of how things operated in May, when we were on a very short time turnaround, as things were moving very quickly at that time, um, is a provision for public comment and notice of what restaurants, um, would be seeking approvals or extensions. Um, the order does not require any public comment. Um, it doesn't require public hearings, it doesn't require notice, um, to a butters. Uh, but in a limited fashion, we thought that with the greater lead time that we would have on these applications, that it would be possible to notify the public via posting on a, on the town website or other, um, sort of widely disseminated means of which restaurants were seeking, uh, approvals. And then interested individuals could comment, um, by email, um, or in writing to pass on, if, for example, someone has had a negative experience or a positive experience, um, with a nearby outdoor dining, um, permit that's been in operation, or if a, a business is seeking one and there's some concern, um, that could be passed along during a set period, or to be considered by staff, um, and the town manager during the administrative approval process. Um, so that's a measure of increased transparency and increased feedback that still allows, um, the process to move forward in a, in a feasible manner. Um, there's still gonna be, I think, a lot of these outdoor dining approvals to do. And I think that, that the governor's order reflects the reality that holding a full, uh, public hearing process on each one would be pretty burdensome to the board. Um, so this was sort of a happy medium that was selected to allow for some feedback without overwhelming, um, board time, staff time.
So, Iry, look, oh, sorry, I was just gonna stop, I was just gonna, um, stop there and just ask, does the board have, I mean, it was pretty comprehensive, what was provided to us in the packet. Does the board have any questions about what, um, Iry just outlined and what you saw in your packet about process?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it. I would go ahead and move that we proceed with that.
I would agree, I think it's well done.
Patterson, sec, Patterson, second.
Okay.
And I have all those.
Okay, Iry, go ahead.
Can I add, uh, one aspect to this? Um, the procedure that is, um, offered for your, um, approval, uh, involves an, a start date that, um, of processing applications, um, that requires a further extension. You have automatically extended all existing permits from November first to December first. Um, so if the vote could also contain an automatic extension further to December fifteenth to allow time to process these applications under the new policy.
Great. Um, do you include that in your motion, Doug?
I do.
Okay, and Sam, for your second, okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
I'm just curious, are you sure that's long enough? You don't need to January first?
I'll defer to Mr. Suso on that.
I think we can probably start with the fifteenth, and then Mr. Suso's gonna let us know if, if it's problematic, we have that ability. We'll meet before then, and, and I think we can probably adjust accordingly.
Yeah, thank you, we, we think internally the fifteenth will work. But if not, I'll come back to the board and ask for some more assistance, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you very much, Iry, appreciate that.
Thank you, Iry.
Thank you. Okay, we have approved twenty-twenty-one annual license renewals. So I will read them by category, if someone will second them at the end, and then we'll vote the categories. All alcohol restaurant, Baron Boots Burger Bar, two eighty-five Main Street, Falmouth Jade, one forty-three East Falmouth Highway, Austria La Cheveta, one thirty-three Main Street, Paul Harney Golf, seventy-four Club Valley Drive, Pickle Jar Kitchen, one seventy Main Street.
Second, Jones?
Oh, Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those in favor, by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones, aye.
Hey, Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. All alcohol package store, Cappies, twenty-one Spring Bars Road. I'm gonna just do it with the next category, wine and malt restaurant, Crab Apples, five thirty-three Palmer Avenue, Homeport Sushi, three sixteen Gifford Street, Sam's Seafood, three fifty-six Palmer Avenue. I'm just gonna do them all, and then we'll do it at the end. Wine and malt package store, Rapid Refill, four thirty-five Palmer Avenue, Wine Malt and Cordial Inholder, Palmer House Inn, eighty-one Palmer Avenue, Common Victroler, Baron Boots Burger Bar, two eighty-five Main Street, Burger King, one eleven T-Ticket Highway, Kuna Mesa Farm, two seventy-seven Asheville Road, Crab Apples, five thirty-three Palmer Avenue, Falmouth Jade, one forty-three East Falmouth Highway, Mary Ellen's Bakery, eight twenty-nine Main Street, Austria La Cheveta, one thirty-three Main Street, Paul Harney Golf, seventy-four Club Valley Drive, Percy's Place, forty North Main Street, Pickle Jar Kitchen, one seventy Main Street, Pie in the Sky, ten Water Street, Sam's Seafood, three fifty-six Palmer Avenue, Thai Kitchen, two fifty-eight T-Ticket Highway, Inholder, Palmer House Inn, one, excuse me, eighty-one Palmer Ave, Class Two Used Cars, Falmouth Auto Sales, seven thirty-five T-Ticket Highway, M and M Auto, Inc., two, uh, twenty A Village Common Drive, O'Hare Motors, fifty Spring Bars Road, Savon Hatum, five sixty-one Thomas Landers Road. Do I have a second for all those?
I'll second.
Guys.
Okay, and, and then, all those by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, meeting minutes, public session, October fifth, twenty twenty, and October nineteenth, twenty twenty. Any corrections?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, on page four, um, in the paragraph, uh, second paragraph of number four, uh, second sentence, it says, "This position will support the school in town. It will be funded through free cash." Next sentence says diversion, it should be diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, uh, oh, no, I, sorry, that was a question I had. I, and with those, that edit, I would move approval, uh, and release the public access.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay. You have your executive, executive session, October nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Is that both public sessions that we approved?
Um, I had called them together, I thought, uh, Mr. Patterson had said he only had that one correction for the both of them.
Right.
Anything for the, any corrections for October nineteenth, twenty twenty executive, or October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty executive?
No.
I found it to be substantially correct, so I, for, uh, the October nineteenth executive session, I move to approve and not release.
Did we release that one?
Well, I wondered, but I was gonna let somebody else let me know, because I couldn't s- see any reason not to release it. But if there were negotiation items in here that should be still held back, I would defer.
Peter, Peter can let us know.
We do wait until the, the year of collective bargaining, all of the unions are settled before we release the, the minutes. Yep, thank you.
So approve and do not release is your motion, Sam, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, and then, for the twenty-sixth?
I'd move approval of the minutes and not release.
Okay, do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Individual, select board members' reports?
Um, I attended the assembly meeting, but nothing earth-shattering happened.
Okay.
Uh, maybe, maybe I could just weigh in on a couple of things. Uh, I, I attended the CPC meeting this past Thursday. Uh, they have, uh, two applications that they are gonna be reviewing in detail, um, but have, have had presenting. One is a Silvi, excuse me, Sylvia Woods Conservation Area in North Falmouth. Um, and they'll be looking for two hundred thousand dollars of Community Preservation Act funds, uh, to pay to the town for a conservation restriction. And they would use that to make the total six hundred thousand dollar purchase, nice piece of, of property there. I just want to compliment, uh, Carla Ferroni, for giving a really good presentation on the status of her current affordable housing projects. And, uh, and the vetting roles that they've found with Affordable Housing Fund Working Group does in supporting both the select board and the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, and she did a pretty nice job of talking about the roles of the Department of Health and Community Services, and also a mass housing partnership, and, uh, locally, the Housing Assistance Corporation. Um, and then, uh, I just also wanted to mention that I have been working over the last four weeks, I guess, with a group that's trying to find a path forward of, for a, uh, fiber optic broadband community network. Um, and doing a lot of brainstorming, talking with potential, uh, internet service providers that could help us either operate or build and operate, uh, such a system, looking at possible funding sources. It's ongoing, um, I guess, uh, uh, he, well, I, I, I should say that, uh, EDIC, of course, had contracted to have a feasibility study done for this such a project. And, uh, the draft came out, it's been circulated at least among a few town staff members. But, uh, they're finalizing that, to finally release it. So hopefully, that's gonna happen probably over the next month. And then we'll actually have something that we can distribute further for more people to, to, uh, input. But, I, no, I think there is at least a potential path forward for a viable business plan. Uh, but we'll have to wait and see how it turns out. And it's gonna depend, I think, uh, on whether if an RFP is eventually issued, how many bidders actually would be interested in doing various, either build-out or operational roles in, in such a network. But, uh, anyway, so that's, that's.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else? Okay, Julian, town manager's report? Um, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Uh, town hall and town administrative offices, uh, will be closed for the upcoming Veterans Day holiday on Wednesday, November eleventh. And as a reminder, um, the, uh, there will be a virtual Veterans Day program, similar to, uh, what the, uh, our veterans, uh, department and, uh, veterans agencies conducted with Memorial Day back in, uh, May. Uh, that will be, of course, on Veterans Day, and it will be on FCTV. And I would anticipate, although I, I have not been able to confirm it as yet, but it's likely to be at eleven AM, uh, on Veterans, the morning of Veterans Day, since that's the traditional time, of course, when the armistice ended World War One. So, uh, also, November Town Meeting convenes at seven PM on Monday, November sixteenth, one week from tonight, at the High School Fieldhouse, we've touched on that. And we'll plan for a very short select board session in advance of this, as we did back on September fourteenth. And lastly, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't note that at nine ten AM this past, uh, yesterday, Sunday, November eighth, we experienced a, uh, a, uh, an earthquake, depending on the sources you check, either between three point six and four point two on the Richter scale, uh, some miles south of, centered some miles south of New Bedford, according to the information that I received. So, uh, I think, uh, all of us felt that tremor, that that unusual, uh, unusual time on a Sunday morning, and thankfully, uh, no evidence of any, uh, damage to anything significant. So that includes my report, and, uh, I thank members of the board.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to, uh, Patterson, move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, okay, all those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.